The board, it's 9:30 a.m. and today is Thursday, May 14th. My name is Brian Zumwalt. I'm the Director of the County's Office of Technology and Innovation. I'll be playing the role of technology moderator for today's virtual meeting. On the panel with me is Don Crowell from the County Attorney's Office who will be serving as process moderator. Before we start this meeting, like to do a quick roll call and ensure that we have adequate communications for each commissioner. So we'll start with Commissioner Eggers.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Commissioner Seal.
Good morning.
Good morning. Commissioner Welch.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good to see you. Commissioner Long.
Good morning.
Good morning. Commissioner Justice.
Good morning, Brian.
Good morning. Commissioner Peters.
I'm here.
And Commissioner Gerard.
I'm here.
All right, Madam Chair, it appears we have a quorum. I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Okay. Okay. I'd like to open this meeting with a moment of silence, please. Okay, thank you. Our first order of business is to look at the local state of emergency. Mr. Burton.
Good morning, Commissioners. The local state of emergency is on the agenda for an extension of our local state of emergency, which would extend it from tomorrow through next Friday. As you're aware, from the last extension, that really just covers the social distancing at 50% of pools, the social distancing on the beach, and the closure of playgrounds. However, you know, there's a lot that goes into, you know, to us adhering to the governor's local state of emergency, and there's a lot of activities. So for today, as part of this discussion, while you're considering this resolution, I've asked Dr. Cho to just share some of the data and information we have on where we're at as a community, our numbers. We also have a brief presentation from the sheriff regarding the activities at the beach and his plans going forward. And then we're very pleased in addition to Dr. Cho to have the Deputy Secretary for Health Quality Assurance, Molly McInnes Street, to join us and just share with the, what the state activities regarding nursing homes, working in conjunction with Dr. Cho, Dr. Jameson, and all of our local fire and EMS personnel in that, on that effort. So if we can start with Dr. Cho, we can go over some of our information.
Good morning, everybody. I'd like to go over some of the information that's been shared. I don't know, Brian, we're going to project any of this information.
Yeah, let me go ahead and share it out and I can give you control here if you want it. Just the one you're looking for, Dr. Cho?
Thank you. Appreciate that. So just an overview, obviously, something that I've always mentioned on the calls that this, we're, is unprecedented. This pandemic has, has, has been involving. We're learning more about it each and every day. Something that we obviously do from the Department of Health standpoint is to track some of this information, some of the trends. Starting with the cases, and I'm referring to this first page. This is from the daily county specific reports. It's presented daily at our Florida Department of Health website. Some of the measures that we, that I'd like to highlight, something that I monitor is obviously the daily counts to see where we're going. Obviously, changes from day to day, and if we do have some increased cases within the long-term care facilities, we may see an increase in a particular day. I'm not sure if I can scroll down, Brian, but.
Sure.
In terms of the cases, it does show that racial and ethnic breakdowns for the cases, hospitalization and death, something we also monitor. And then looking at the percent positivity, I think that's important to look at. Something I think we've talked about here as well. And basically what that is, is looking at the positive cases given the tests of that particular day. And you can see some of the trends here over the last few days. It's been hovering about 1% to 2%. But in terms of the cases, in terms of percent positivity, we did see an increase over the last two due to increased cases within our long-term care. Brian, I'll ask you to scroll down. Thank you. Something that we watch, this is our syndromics and balance. It's tied into all the emergency rooms here in the hospitals in Pinellas. We track things like if we're seeing an increased activities as it pertains to cough, fevers, and shortness of breath. So we do track what we combine as COVID-like illness or influenza-like illness. So monitoring those trends, and as you can see for both those measures, that they have been decreasing. This is an important thing to monitor because if we're starting to see an increase of the disease in our community, that, that would probably be one of the first indicators as it may go up. So something that we do continue to watch through our syndromic surveillance system. In terms of the next page of the report, just a further breakdown in terms of the long-term care facilities. I can see the day-to-day count. This includes both staff and residents from March 25th through present day. We also track the cases by week as well. So you can see sort of the cases, and obviously it really depends on if a particular facility does have an increased count that particular, for a given week. Okay. Just to look at it further, I'll refer to that bar graph. You can see the yellow, these bar graphs indicating the weekly case counts overall, and then the darker orange is what percentage, how many of those cases pertain, are related to long-term care facilities. For example, on the week of May 3rd, you can see that we had 88 cases overall, 27 of which were comprised of the long-term care facilities. Okay. So obviously with the flattening of the curve, something that we've always sort of stressed, the concern of a hospital type of surge. So some of the things that we do monitor that's important is looking at ICU bed availability as well as vent, ventilator ability. This is from the ACHA ESS report, hospital data. So something that we, we track on a pretty regular and daily basis. So you can see here as of the 13th, that ICU bed available were only at about 25%, but in terms of vents, we were at 63% of the vents being available. This is a quick depiction of where the cases are by zip codes. So it's a, it's a quick snapshot. You can see where some of the cases have been. It's been fairly consistent. This is also on our DOH website as well. So you can look at it here on, for a daily basis. And then, and then lastly, just covering here is another way to sort of look at our trends. This is the percent positivity over a single day and an average sort of trying to smooth out the curve. The big thing that we are trying to monitor here is to see if, if there's a increase or doubling of the case counts. So another way to sort of look at it, but in conjunction with this and conjunction with the syndromics surveillance information and the new case counts, as well as sort of some of the regional trend lines is what we need to really all look at as a, as an overall picture to, to see where we are and what kind of trends that we're seeing in our community. And if, if the disease does happen, have a resurgence or an uptick. So with that, with that, I'd like to focus real briefly on some of the efforts within our long-term care facilities. Obviously, with the long-term care facilities, they remain to be our top priority. As you probably all heard, we've developed a great partnership here locally in Pinellas County, the Long-Term Care Task Force, comprised of hospitals, EMS, fire, emergency management, Pinellas County, DOH, as well as ACHA. And the main thing, one of the things that we've accomplished is really focused on the prevention piece. So in a great partnership with fire and EMS, they've been able to go out to all the facilities, assess their, their needs, infection control practices, P E supplies, as well as provide training. And to date, they have, when, they went to over 200 sites, and of which they've actually visited some of the sites more than four or five times. So they've been a great asset, and I'm grateful for that great partnership and all the hard work from EMS fire. So with the task force, we're going to continue to look for ways to pull down state and regional resources. So we have deployed infection control practitioners, clinical augmentation teams. We help facilitate some of the testings within the facilities as well. And as an update, in terms of testing within the long-term care facilities, at the state level, DOH has partnered with a private lab to focus on the long-term care facilities. And the turnaround time for that lab is about 22 days. So that will be starting the next few days as well. And ACHA can probably speak a little more to this, but they've pushed down a lot of rules and guidance over the last few weeks. The one rule and guidance that I'll highlight is that, is that if a facility does not have the ability to isolate or properly care for a person that's positive COVID, that the recommendation is to transfer them to a facility that can or at a higher, higher, an acute care setting. So with that kind of guidance, we, we may see some increased transfers of positive COVID cases to hospitals or other facilities. If, if the facilities feel that they cannot care for those individuals or properly isolate. So with that, I'll stop there.
Commissioner Long.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Dr. Cho, thank you for that report. And while I don't mean to, I don't, I hope you don't think I'm pointing fingers at everyone, but the data that you just spoke about from your chart on the first slide that you had up.
Yes, ma'am.
Did not reflect the information that I'm pretty sure I heard you convey yesterday morning in our policy call. And that was that from Tuesday until Wednesday, we had an uptick of 30 cases that had been notated with 63 deaths. And secondly, as it relates to your comments about the capacity in the hospitals, I could be wrong about this, but I thought I heard the number 90% of the beds in the ICUs were full. And there was some discussion about whether or not that was because we had started up with elective surgeries again. So that's a bit concerning to me. And I'd be curious, because I, if you said it, I did not make a note of where we identified the 30 uptick in cases. And then lastly, while I know we had a brief discussion yesterday amongst all of you, I just am baffled at the lack of accountability for the fact that we are so lacking in the data about whether or not we have enough tests and people just aren't getting them, or whether we have more people that need and want the test that aren't getting the test. There just doesn't seem to be any clear answer to that question. And I know that we in Pinellas County are not alone in this conversation because if you pay attention to even the state or the national news, everybody is talking about that. But for crying out loud, we've been working on this now for two months. And we know that we still have this huge void in our ability to test our citizens. Yet, we keep moving forward to have discussions about reopening more of this and that and every other thing. So I know that's a lot, and I apologize for putting it all in one big place. But I hope you can provide some clarity, or somebody can, because the buck has to stop somewhere in terms of who's responsible, how do we get the test, how do we ramp up more of it? And how can we ensure that the numbers that we're getting are real? Because they conflict with the state, I mean, with the, with the Public Health Department, the Public Health Department, ACHA, the nurse, I mean, they all have different numbers. So somebody's got to have a total somewhere. Thank you.
Okay, um, let me start off with your first question regarding the numbers. So again, with this daily summary for Pinellas County and for all the counties in the state, they do have the individual reports. I think when we did the snapshot, it was just on the 12th, but you're correct. As yesterday, we did see, or the 12th, we did see an increase of 30 in terms of the new counts of that day. Of 20 of the 30 were, were comprised of the long-term care facility. So again, it goes to up and down based on if we are seeing an increase in terms of cases when in the long term or other clusters. So it's, again, it's a fluid number and it changes. What we like is utilizing one source because if you take a data at different times and different snapshots, it can show some inconsistencies. That's why we've sort of agreed with our data group to sort of go with one. We also make a connotation as to when that snapshot was taken. So moving forward, we'll try to provide more clarity as to when, when and how, how the data is given, how fluid it can be. With the ICU, obviously, that is a huge concern. It's something that we do monitor on a pretty regular basis. We work with the hospital systems and on our task force and, and as well as our hospital working groups, monitoring some of those concerns. The overall report for the county does show for the ICU beds, the ICU beds, 25%, I think that's overall. I know some of the other hospital systems are only about 10% for some of them. So again, it's something that we do monitor for them and will continue to work with them through our various working groups. Now, now in terms of community testing, I think we've worked with a number of partners over the last few weeks. And we've been able to ramp out as a community, a number of testing sites. CHC now has four sites. Advent will be starting to open up a site in North County on Monday. The Bay Care is going to continue the Carillon sites as well as our DOH testing site. So we have over the last few weeks increased in our community testing. We did have a testing call, a committee call yesterday. What was interesting and maybe something that needs to, something that we need to communicate in terms of availability, but they weren't as full as, they did not hit their capacity over this past week. So maybe getting that information out there as to availability, especially as new sites sort of come online. I think that's important and something in terms of numbers that we can continue to track.
And just as a, as a side note, the community health centers have a capacity of an additional 150 people a day. So they're not at capacity and they, and so they're taking anybody that needs a test, if they walk up, they can get a test.
Commissioner Peters.
Madam Chair, I didn't raise my hand at all.
Okay, you must have been. Commissioner Welch.
She was raising it for me. Thank you, Kathleen. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Seal, sorry.
Is it Seal or Welch now?
Welch, go ahead.
So I just wanted to kind of piggyback on that. Dr. Cho, going back to the report that you showed us, where is that specific format available? That's different from the one that we see at the Florida Department of Health site. Is the report you showed us accessible to the commissioners? Is that a custom report that y'all put together?
Dr. Cho, you're muted.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So the first page does come straight from the DOH website. The remainder of the information was put together by the data work group and is available to the commissioners, I believe.
Commissioners, we, we formed a data work group made up of county staff and Dr. Cho's staff, sheriff's staff, trying to consolidate information down in one spot. So they are using the Department of Health website and state website. But things like integrating in the long-term care facility, one of the important points is to differentiate the new number of cases with, on, on each day with the number of new cases we're seeing in long-term care facilities. That's really a manual process. And so they're creating a couple of charts to add to it to where we can go to one place and, and track information consistently. So that's about kind of been a work in progress, and that's the reason you'll see different pieces. But it's all coming out of the same spot, that the long-term care piece isn't on a state website like that, like that is.
So that consolidated report, the PDF that Dr. Cho just walked through, you're going to push that to us weekly?
And that, that'll come out weekly.
Okay. Is there a specific day of the week that'll come out? I just want to get that.
Yeah, they're, they're consolidating the information on a Wednesday, get it to us on a Thursday. That way we can have it for either like this call that we kind of moved it up so we could have that available for today. Normally, it's for our Friday morning, you know, work group call.
Okay. And I just do want to throw in a comment on testing, just on the heels of Commissioner Long's comments. I do think that we've made steady progress in the county. Share with Barry and Lourdes, I visited Johnny Ruth Clark yesterday, and they had a very nice setup. Folks were driving up, walking up. But I do think there's kind of an information flow issue with the community. Folks who, and just this morning, I got hit on Facebook Messenger with someone who went last week and was told, they walked up and were told, well, you have to call in and make an appointment. So we still need to get that process straight so that folks don't have to come back two or three times. But there is a demand out there for folks who want the test. And then as a layperson, I still, like Commissioner Long, am concerned as we move forward with reopening that we're all on the same page in terms of how testing will help us to do that safely. And you see the debate even with Dr. Fauci in the Senate yesterday, that those folks are even on different pages in terms of how testing will work, how we'll know about folks being immune. You know, Dr. Jameson talked about that yesterday. And even Barry, when you get into opening the county, how we do that safely for our employees and for folks that come in from the public to make sure that we're not, you know, spreading the virus. Now, I read one, one report, Dr. Cho, that said the 21 folks at the Gulf Shore Care Center yesterday were all asymptomatic. Is that, is that correct?
Down, we don't discuss the specifics, but a lot of the times I can tell you the majority of the, the positive COVID cases can be asymptomatic, yes, sir.
Okay. Well, this was on, on the news, so it's, it's out there in the public and it's being talked about. And so that's my question, if you've got that many folks who aren't showing any symptoms, you know, how do you move about towards a greater, you know, reopening without doing something further in terms of testing or masks or those kinds of things, just to be as safe as possible? So that's a concern I have as, as we move forward. Barry just wanted to put that. Thank you.
And on the, you know, I just want to remind the public, you know, we're working with community partners on these testing sites. So the CHC sites is not county-run sites. So as we get that information, we're, we're reaching back out to the CEO of that entity, talking about what's happening at the site. They're doing the same thing. They've made changes to that site. Over 80% of the testing is done outside of, you know, Dr. Cho and the Health Department and sites that, that we actually run. And so that's part of the reason for the lag in information and the reporting. So we, we are working with community partners on that. Advent is going to start up a site up in North County next week. But we're, we're working with community partners trying to get that out. And the testing, having the number of test kits, you know, as you know, has been, you know, an issue and having an accurate number. And it's not just having the test kits, but the type of test where you can get a ready response. It's the lab capacity. So even if they get the test kits, being able to have labs that will turn that around in a timely manner has, you know, continues to be an issue. These test sites have up, they're getting data back. So, you know, it's working better than we've seen, you know, weeks ago. But, but, but there's still reporting issues.
And last, last comment, Madam Chair, I just want to commend community health centers for stepping forward. There was pent-up demand out there. There are supply chain issues, you know, and they did step up and correct those problems as well as the phone center issue. So, you know, they stepped forward when, when we needed someone to do that. So I just wanted to say that as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Seal.
Commissioner Welch and Commissioner Long addressed some of the things that I was concerned about. But I think it would be good to have, even though, I mean, because we are working with partners on our website, a specific area just for tests. And so we already have on our fact site, three of the locations for community health centers. But we only mentioned calling DOH and then getting referred. But I think as we have more specificity and more information, we ought to list the locations in that you don't have to have symptoms at the CHC sites, and this is how many capacity they have per day. So that it doesn't become some kind of a surge that can't be handled. And if, you know, Bay Care at Carillon, that's symptoms and that's kind of private. And I just think we need to have a list that's very specific as far as testing sites and capacity. I am also worried if we do get a surge, whether, you know, the demand versus supply that the sheriff mentioned yesterday on our policy call, that does deeply concern me. The other thing that perhaps Dr. Cho can address is, we did have a discussion at the policy meeting. We didn't discuss it, but we listened to contact tracing and what the Health Department is doing on that at the present time. Because that also, to me, is going to be the way in the wave of the future, how we're going to be able to identify and contain. Thank you.
Mr. Justice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Cho, you hear a lot of concern about the testing, obviously, this morning, about the availability, about which is where it's at. The, the question I've been getting a lot is from the folks around me is, I've been doing all the things that I'm supposed to do. I've been distancing. We've been staying home. I feel fine. I have no symptoms. But down the street, a clinic opened up, or a clinic has got to sign out in front, says testing free today, no appointments. Should I go get tested, or am I taking a test from someone who is needing it? Are quantities out there? So just as an average citizen who feels fine, what's your recommendation for just walking in and getting a test?
Again, I think it's based on the availability of the supply chain. But it looks like we do have those available currently, especially at two of our sites, and Advent coming up on Monday. So I, so I do encourage if, if that's a need and it's a desire. Obviously, I think something I've mentioned on some of the calls in the past is that we also need to focus that this isn't going to go away. It's going to be a long-term issue. And just ensuring that on the backend, we do continue to have those supplies and testings available when we, when we do have increase in cases, I think is also important. So hopefully I answered that. Can I go back to the contact tracing? Obviously, with a lot of the documents that came out at a federal and state levels, one of the components that does need a part of the reopening is the contact tracing piece of it. And contact tracing is essentially what we do on a day-to-day basis at the Department of Health, finding out the positives and who may, who they may have exposed. So obviously with the numbers increasing, and it is, it is something that we need to keep an eye on in terms of capabilities within the Health Department. We were able to sort of leverage our other staff, clinical staff. We have over 22 staff currently doing the investigation portion and 18 additional staff doing call down, what we call contact monitoring. So we have, and, and we're also looking at partnerships with the University of South Florida's College of Public Health to get all these epidemiologists and resources as needed. So we're going to continue to look at that, continue to look at our volume, but the contact tracing is, is it going to be a key component to all of this?
Thank you. Ms. McInnes Street, did you want to say something?
Sure. Good morning. Yes, thank you. Thank you for inviting us. And I really want to recognize what you're doing as a community, to pay attention to this issue, to circulate information, and to be engaged with the Department of Health. You are one of the counties with the largest number of nursing homes in the state, and so you have a special place in terms of your engagement with long-term care. So we really appreciate that. We also appreciate the partnership. My staff, Kim Smoke, who is our chief of field operations and Pat Kaufman have been routinely participating in calls that Lourdes Benedict has been hosting several times a week. But I think several of you may be engaged in, and that's been very helpful. Sitting with Dr. Cho, working on issues related to long-term care. So we appreciate that very much. A couple of comments that I'll make in terms of outreach, and I know Dr. Cho mentioned a couple of the initiatives that we've done. So we, you know, early on in the process, we were making site visits to facilities, checking on infection control issues, being supportive as facilities were kind of preparing, gearing up for what was to come, not really knowing, of course, but and we've also started to make visits early on with the Department of Health to long-term care facilities as they identified issues. We're now in a phase that we're still working with Department of Health very closely, following their lead on any areas of concern. And then also responding to any concerns or complaints that are raised. So we are making regulatory visits. We do regulate and license long-term care facilities in the state. And so as those issues come up, we're there with the Department of Health to address those. We are also hosting much, a lot of communication with provider groups. We have weekly calls with long-term care providers from around the state. Everyone is invited to attend and have been more focused. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. We have been focused on regional collaboratives with hospitals as well. So we've, Secretary Mayhew has been facilitating several regional teams with hospital leadership, Pinellas and Hillsborough and another surrounding counties. And that's been very helpful to get a handle on their engagement with long-term care facilities. Hospitals are centers in infection control and response around the state. And so their ability to work with their long-term care facilities is very critical. Dr. Cho mentioned a couple of the rules that we put in place. We issued an emergency rule to require that hospitals test residents before they go to a long-term care facility to make sure that they're negative for COVID-19. Most, many hospitals were doing that, but in this case, we are now requiring it for any patient going to a long-term care facility, not just if they presented with symptoms for COVID. And I think that will add additional protections, especially related to the asymptomatic positive cases that we're seeing in the state. We also, earlier this week, issued emergency rules for nursing homes and assisted living facilities, requiring, excuse me, that they make sure that if testing is offered by the Department of Health, which in many cases, you're, I'm sure you're aware that the National Guard and Department of Health have been conducting facility-wide testing in long-term care facilities for a couple of weeks now and are expanding that project quite a bit. So the new rules require that these facilities ensure that all of their staff are tested when those teams arrive. And if that includes bringing people in on shift and things like that, that is an expectation. We are working closely with the Department of Health and expanding testing to long-term care staff. And they're looking at a multifaceted approach to that, including additional onsite visits, creating access to testing if it's available locally and other mechanisms to efficiently facilitate testing of staff. So that's been very important. I know testing is obviously on your mind. It's certainly on ours as we look at the long-term care environment. We do monitor daily. We have nursing homes, assisted living facilities, hospitals and other providers that enter information into a system that we host as part of the Emergency Response Project called the Emergency Status System. We collect information about the number of COVID cases, the number of transfers from a long-term care facility, the number of positive staff. And that is shared on the Department of Health's website as well, under long-term care facility information. Those were, I think, the biggest issues I wanted to mention. Oh, Dr. Cho also mentioned the guidance on, or the expectation actually, on long-term care facility cases and transfers. So we did publish about two weeks ago, an expectation that nursing homes follow the CDC guidance, that they follow protections in terms of isolation, and if they have positive cases and are unable to adequately isolate those residents and follow all CDC guidelines in terms of protection and infection control. They're expected to transfer those residents if they require hospital care to a hospital and if not to another long-term care facility capable of caring for them. We have worked on development of locations around the state that are devoted to serving COVID clients, and we're in the process of standing more of those up at this time. So it's been an evolving process. Again, really appreciate your engagement in this. Please know that we will continue to participate in those calls that happen a couple of times a week and make sure that we're responsive to concerns you're seeing as well as we work with the Department of Health. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Long?
Yes. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Molly, thank you so much for all of that detail about your agency and what you're doing. As someone who in another chapter of my life worked for a long time in a regulatory and licensing agency, I'm pretty clear about what those responsibilities are. And so I am baffled to understand, and maybe you can help me, what that means for ACHA, because we know that in several of our nursing home facilities, they had no protocols in place for infectious disease control. They, their medical directors apparently were not involved in ensuring that those things were in place. And those are with the, with the facilities that we know about. Considering how many of them we have in the county, I'm curious about what your agency might be doing to ensure those protocols are in place, that they're being followed, that they have the supplies they need in terms of PPEs and masks, et cetera, et cetera. And that as we move forward, and I think we all know there's a possibility in the fall that we'll get a second surge of this virus, that we don't encounter this again.
Thank you. Thank you. Those are, those are great questions. So we have worked very closely with the Department of Health, who is the, the public health authority when it comes to responding to issues in facilities. I will tell you that nursing homes are expected to have infection control policies and procedures that they follow. However, I think that the level of infection control that is necessary to care for COVID clients is certainly beyond what they're typically experiencing. So it's really important when there are cases that they work closely with the Department of Health and the teams that they've established to assist these facilities in determining if they can appropriately care for those individuals. And I know that Department of Health has been very engaged with some of their strike teams in working with facilities on training if needed, making sure that they have personal protective equipment. The county emergency operations centers are really helping them in terms of supplying PPE when they're unable to get it themselves. But I know in many cases, if health is engaged with them, they are also assisting with those activities. I'll defer to Dr. Cho in terms of, you know, experiences that he's had at specific facilities, but you know, I do get the feedback based upon our discussions that it's important to make sure that the staff understand what's necessary to care for these clients. And again, if they feel that they are unable to do that, there's an expectation that they transfer them. Thank you.
Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The concern, you've talked a little bit about it, but a lot of folks have, and thank you for being with us this morning. The infection control, the policies, the training, the need for retraining is our, our strike teams and our EMS folks have been visiting these facilities. Couple of questions. One, beyond just the, what I would consider typical facility training and for infection control, for treating folks in this situation, are the employees made aware and kind of made to understand the role that they're playing these folks' lives now that after they clock out, that their responsibility doesn't end, that, that they need to be more conservative than the average citizen in their day-to-day lives outside of the facilities, because they could bring something back into the facilities? Is that part of the education, the conversation with these employees?
Dr. Cho, would you like to speak to some of the issues in terms of on-the-ground work that your teams are doing?
Obviously, that's a component assessing, assessing the need. And I think we've taken sort of a collaborative approach, whether it was EMS fire, whether it's, it's the infection prevention teams that go out and investigate, whether it's a DOH environmental teams that go out. And if we do see some deficiencies and stuff like that, what we've done, and I don't, ACHA has developed this complaint form that we report out to ACHA if they continuously and do not have some of those capabilities in place. So so we, it is something that we do monitor from our end pretty closely and then report to ACHA as needed.
I think maybe Dr. Jameson can also add to that, what you're doing when you go out there.
I'm sorry, ma'am. I was taking a radio call from one of the field crews. What was the question, please?
They were talking about training within the long-term care facilities and the message that we're giving to staff. In terms of their precautions in their personal life.
Yeah. So I think I'd just like to, first of all, recognize all the fire and EMS crews for all the hard work that they've been doing out there to to help really support all of our long-term care facilities. They're going out and using some checklists to assess the facility in terms of what their capabilities are. And then they're doing training and sort of train the trainer with the staff there in terms of how to use PPE, how to do appropriate isolation protocols. And I do believe they are talking as well with the staff about how to keep themselves protected.
Well, and if I could, it's, it's beyond, it's beyond the day, you know, day-to-day operations at the facility, but that they kind of have to know that during, especially during this time, that they're going to be held to a higher standard in their personal lives as far as, you know, after they punch out the clock. So that was kind of the message I wanted to make sure that those employees were receiving. And Ms. McKinstry, the second question I had for you was, it was reported yesterday, the governor's talking about opening visitations at nursing homes. And I wanted to see what kind of criteria and standards would have to be met during some of these situations before that would be, the governor would be allowing that.
Thank you. Yes, and hopefully, if you did not get a chance to catch it, the Florida Channel did record a long-term care program that the governor hosted yesterday to do a press conference related to long-term care in Florida. Really showing what a great job Florida has done relative to the, some other states in terms of long-term care facilities and protecting those clients. So it's a lot of great information in there. As they're thinking about visitation in long-term care facilities, I think those, those pieces will be developed. One of the things that is certainly particularly sensitive is that you have residents in those facilities whose family have not been able to visit them, who have not been able to socially engage. And so the sensitivity to what a visitor restrictions do over the course of time is certainly significant. So I will certainly be working with the governor's office on identifying some of those precautions that would need to be in place as these policies are developed. And we'll keep you posted through our, through our weekly calls as well.
Commissioner Eggers?
Commissioner Eggers, I'm sorry, you're muted, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate your being here this morning as well and sharing some insight. I think clearly, one of the things that we've discovered throughout this process is that our long-term care facilities have, have not been trained as well as they could have been. And and certainly the efforts that are going on right now are a step in the right direction. We, it's kind of scary to think that we were that, that, that behind in many cases, but really, as Dr. Jameson said, commend the group and commend the state partners, et cetera, with trying to get on top of this. I think as we go forward, you know, whether it's, you know, confidence building with our, our, you know, our employees, whether it's our, the businesses or, you know, even the folks that are a little more nervous about getting, getting out into the public. We're going to need to do a better job, I, in my mind, of informing through the dashboard that we have on a daily basis. This, this week thing that we do, I appreciate all the numbers that have to get, that go into it. Maybe we don't do all the numbers every day, but our folks are watching those. They want to see more of that. And in a couple of presentations that I've done this week, that loud and clear was like, well, we have no idea what's going on. We see the DOH numbers. We can get on site and see some of that, but what are you, you think Pinellas County to make these decisions? So I think we need to do a better job of informing, helping our residents understand the, the things that we're looking at. And from a testing standpoint, I think it's just been one of the biggest disappointments for me over the past eight weeks is, is, is not only how, I guess, to use a word that I heard yesterday, decentralized the process has been. So it becomes very confusing in terms of understanding access to testing and where the testing is and who's going to be doing it, the Department of Health, you've got private groups. And it's very disjointed. And so certainly the perception is, is that it's that way. And I think, again, lessons learned is that we need to do a better job, I think, and pulling that together for, for our residents. And I, and I'm just, again, the, the amount of testing we're doing, I heard something yesterday, was at two percent levels. I could see on some of these numbers, I'm looking down at the chart right now, that the percent positivity is going down. Obviously, the number of positive tests are going up, which means we're doing a lot more testing. And I think, again, that message needs to be getting out there. We need to do a better job of getting that information out. And I, I know it's really about getting the information together first and then transmitting it out there. And that is not, it is not a criticism of anybody, but I'm just telling you what people are saying. We're trying to get the information ourselves and it's difficult sometimes. And there's so many efforts going on and so many different directions we're going, but our residents are just, in many cases, they're in the dark. And so I think the better we can do on that, I think will help improve some of that confidence that we're going to need to see, to see going forward. And I'm really glad to see that we're standing up a North County site up in, up in Tarpin Springs. You know, again, trying to access, getting tests accessible to people is going to be really important going forward. And the last thing I would say is that there seems to be a real effect on our hospital beds based on, on, on the activities that are going on in our community and in our long-term care. So again, I'd like to see those numbers on a, on a daily basis so we can start to monitor that. Maybe Barry, you can talk a little bit to that flexibility that hospitals have, or somebody could talk to the flexibility that hospitals hospitals have to increase if they need to, above and beyond what's currently available. So just maybe a comment on that. And thank you, Madam Chair, for letting me say a few words.
Thank you. Sure. So on the hospital, there is a lot of flexibility for hospitals to, to surge up if needed, either for acute care beds or for long-term care. And we've worked closely with our Medicaid program and with our federal partners to increase options for hospitals to use their beds in different ways, including additional space. So one of the recent clarifications we received this week was more flexibility for hospitals to use what are called swing beds, which are beds that can be available for acute care, traditional hospital services or long-term care. So that gives them a way to provide services to long-term care residents for an extended period of time, if that's a position that they're in. Certainly, the goal would be to have sufficient long-term care facilities for these clients to be discharged from the hospital if they don't need hospital level of care. So we're working on all those options, including some additional long-term care facilities that focus in this area as well. We do really appreciate, I mentioned the regional collaboration. So we're talking at least weekly with the, the Pinellas hospitals are participating in the call that Lourdes facilitates. We also meet with the other county hospital sections, and then we're doing some activities more regionally as well. And so those calls really help us stay in tune with the challenges the hospitals are experiencing so that we can try to find some relief valves for those situations as well. We do publish on our website, and I can send a link, the hospital bed census and availability every day. Oh, my gosh, we're having a fire drill. I apologize. Um, I think I need to leave. So I'm going to leave my computer on, and if it's a false alarm, I'll be, oh, okay, sorry about that. Okay, it just stopped. So we can, we can certainly provide some additional information about the hospitals to you as well.
Yes.
You mentioned, you know, you're having hospitals providing more opportunities for, for beds, especially the ICU-type beds, because you know, one of the things that we're looking at is, again, whether opening up is going to create a little bit of a surge of cases, or whether more elective surgeries are going to create more demand for beds, or whether it's just a normal behavior, people getting back to normal behavior, which creates unfortunately, more accidents and that kind of thing. So there's going to be more pressures there. On the alternative care site, is there any work being done on that front? Is there any, any thought about that as, as it relates to, you know, a place? Is there any, any thought about that as, as it relates to, you know, a, a place to, to put some of the COVID patients that we get that to relieve the pressure on the hospitals? Or is there any work being done on that side?
Yes, we've, so we've seen several hospitals investigate different alternative care site options, some of which are expanding beds within their campus and some are beyond. We've worked with them, certainly early in this, in this epidemic, there was a much greater concern, obviously, of the need for more acute care beds. And so I, I feel like many hospitals have laid the groundwork for that. We've also seen that happening with some long-term care facilities that have expanded their footprint so that they could handle surge in a long-term care setting as well. So those options are available. They vary certainly by region, by geographic area. But those are definitely areas that we're able to help facilitate when we start to see an issue and working with those local collaboratives through the hospitals. Also, long-term care providers, we're working closely with the state associations on that and have been able to answer questions about providers considering that and then push areas where we see needs.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you so much for being here.
Sure. And if I.
For being with us.
Absolutely. And so Commissioner Justice, we will definitely make sure that we're keeping Lerdis apprised of some of the considerations in terms of lifting those visitor restrictions. I know you've got a keen interest in that. And I think that, you know, again, we'll be developing those with the governor's office in the near future here and definitely keep you posted through those meetings. Thank you so much for having us today, and we really appreciate the engagement of your entire community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Madam Chair, is we have the sheriff on the line, and he can provide an update regarding the beach issues, the efforts that occurred last weekend and his plans for going forward.
Thank you. Sheriff Gaultier.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, everybody. As I go through this, one of the things I just want to, as a point of clarification, when I talk about beach closures, what I'm talking about is, is that the temporary closure of a beach at a certain place because it has reached its capacity. So just so we're on the same page and I'm clear in what I'm saying, when I'm talking about closing a beach, I'm not talking about the total closure or nobody's there. I'm talking about it's reached its capacity to be able to function under this board's order of social distancing. So as we know, about a week and a half ago, on May 4th, Monday, May 4th, is when the beaches opened in Pinellas County to ensure compliance with the governor's order about social distancing and the board's order. We immediately staffed the beaches from north part of the county in Fort Soto, I'm sorry, in Fred Howard, all the way down to the south part of the county, Fort Soto, with a total of about 300 law enforcement officers at all of the beach access points and the parks, in the parking lots, et cetera. We also included Gandy Beach, Courtney Campbell Causeway, Skyway Beach, any place that's a beach in Pinellas County. And the main purpose of that was, was to educate the public on a new norm, if you will, of going to the beach. This is not going to the beach as usual. We have to ensure distancing to ensure people stay healthy and to avoid further community spread of the virus. So people cannot just go to the beach in droves and cram as many people as possible into a limited space. And at the same time, comply with the distancing order. So we covered each beach access point from San Key all the way down to Passageway. And we asked deputies to ensure that beach density was not exceeded. And we talk about beach density. We're talking about the number of people on the beach that can comply with the order, which means groups of no more than 10 and that people are staying six feet apart. I also went into this, and I believe, and I hope you do, that it's important that the order issued by the Board of County Commissioners is a county-wide order and that it be applied consistently throughout all of Pinellas County. And that means in every city as well as in the county parks. There can't be and there shouldn't be pockets in the county where people cram on the beach and other places where people are restricted. It has to be uniform. To be fair is to be consistent, to be consistent is to be fair, and it has to be the same throughout the entire county. So if density becomes too much, as I said, we went into this with the idea and, and the plan and the effect in the practice of closing certain portions because the capacity was being exceeded under these requirements. So when that happened, we did not simply turn people away. We redirected them to open sections of the beach so that they weren't frustrated by traveling all the way to the beach only to be denied access. So we were able to redirect them to the open areas and help them get on there and enjoy the beaches. That's what we all want. So we also staffed parking lots, we staffed the bridges, we staffed the causeways and to monitor and to ease the flow of traffic. And at some intersections throughout the county, we actually manually controlled the intersections to make sure the traffic was flowing. We also engaged in a significant public education effort through the media and on social media. And as you know, we launched the dashboard to provide real-time beach access updates to the people that are heading to the beaches. The dashboard listed every Pinellas County beach access point, the parking lots, and we denoted them is green, yellow, and red. Green, it's wide open, come. Yellow, it's getting full, you might want to watch this. And red is, don't come, because that particular access point of that parking lot. And where it showed up on the dashboard when it was yellow, we were giving people percentages of being filled so that they could gauge it depending upon their travel time to the beach, whether they wanted to go there or someplace else. The real importance and the real value of the dashboard is the, if you will, live, real-time information. And it was funneled to people operating the dashboard by the deputies on the ground. So having the deputies at each one of these access points on the beach, in the parking lots, and funneling this live, real-time information was giving people that immediate snapshot they needed, needed to be able to make the decisions that they did. So we launched the dashboard last Friday, and from the time it went live on Friday afternoon through Sunday, that dashboard webpage received over 166,000 hits. So it was very much used, which is great, and we thank the public for using the dashboard and to help us and to help them get to the beaches. Alone on Saturday morning, between 9:00 AM and 11:00 AM on Saturday morning, there were 25,000 hits on the dashboard. And you could see it as people were hitting the page, checking it, and then it started to trickle off. As the beaches started to fill up, that means the people were coming, used it. We, we have an ability through that dashboard to know where some of the IP addresses are that are hitting it. And over the course of the weekend, the most hits were coming from Eastern Hillsborough County. Brandon alone had 13,000 hits. So it tells us a lot of the people that are coming to the beaches are coming from outside of Pinellas. The weekdays last week were good, and it was really not a challenge during the week. The beaches were definitely busier than usual, that they would be on a normal workday. But we were able to deal with it and not much issues during the week. We knew that this past weekend, though, being the first weekend the beaches were open, being Mother's Day, that they'd be a challenge. Saturday was a challenge. Saturday was very busy. But Sunday, we got some weather, and that was a help due to the inclement weather on Sunday. Very few people went to the beaches until late in the afternoon. But I think Saturday is a view of what we're going to face this upcoming weekend and especially next weekend, being Memorial Day weekend. Overall, the public was great. They cooperated, and people were taking it seriously. People made an effort to stay in their groups and to stay separated despite, despite some of the areas being full. There were some areas that filled up fast. And again, this is very concerning as we go into the Memorial Day weekend. So to give you an idea as to what filled up fast and where on Saturday, by 9:45 AM on Saturday morning, six main parking lots on Clearwater Beach were closed due to being full. By 9:50 AM, we had closed further access to Passageway Beach from First Avenue all the way up to 11th Avenue. By 10:40, we had shut down Dunedin Causeway and Honeymoon Island due to capacity and concern over density. By 11:30, we had closed Fred Howard Park. And by noon, the beach access points on Clearwater Beach were closed from Opal Sands to the Hyatt, and people were redirected to areas around Pier 60 and to the north of the pier. By 12:40, the, both the north and the south parking lots and beach access points in Fort Soto were closed as well. So we monitored all of these access points throughout the day, and we opened and closed them based upon room, based upon space and based upon the density. So just because we shut something down doesn't mean it stayed down the entire time, and we continued to go back and forth, or and open them as we could. I'd say the biggest areas of concern throughout the county are Fred Howard Park, Dunedin Causeway, Clearwater Beach, Sunset Beach and Treasure Island, St. Pete Beach, Passageway and Fort Soto. One of the greatest concerns I have going forward is that we had the capacity issues we did in Clearwater and the St. Pete Beach without some of the hotels even being open, and those that were open were well below normal occupancy. So assuming that more hotels are going to open and that occupancy will increase, especially from Memorial Day, we're going to have to keep a very close eye on these beach capacity limits. So as you'll see here in a second, I'm going to show you some photographs. You'll see what it looked like out there in some of these dense areas. I know that we're going to have to close certain portions of the beaches, and this is just something that the public's going to have to understand is that we're going to have to close certain portions of the beaches. And if there's no room left to redirect the beachgoers, that some of the beaches may have to be closed altogether. Again, our, our number one effort, our number one priority is for people to come to the beaches and enjoy them, patronize the businesses and have a lot of success out there. And as we are closing certain portions, we are redirecting people to others to make it easy for them. But I am concerned that we're going to reach, especially in some places in Clearwater, St. Pete Beach and Dunedin Causeway, as an example, and some others, that there's just not going to be any more room to redirect people, and the beaches will actually have to be closed. And again, I see that happening in those areas. So again, with Clearwater, beach hotel occupancy was down. So this is a photograph from last Wednesday, and even last Wednesday, as you can see here, so this is Wednesday at about 3:00 PM midweek. And the photograph you see on the right is from the helicopter at the same time that the photograph is being taken on the ground. And when you look out, and we've talked about this before, but I just want to point it out again, is that when you look out on a ground view, and this is Pier 60 looking southbound, is, it's a very different view and it suggests that not necessarily an accurate view of the density when you're looking on the ground looking out. And I, again, caution everybody to be careful. And sometimes the photograph tells a story and sometimes it doesn't tell the whole story. And as you can see there on the left, is, is that I'd say by looking at it at the ground with nothing else, if all you're doing is looking at that picture, it would give people pause and say, you know, that looks a little thick. But when you look at it at the right, you can see how spread out people are, and you can see how wide open it is, and importantly, how much sand is available. You want to go into the next one, Brian? So this is the ninth, which is Saturday. This is about noon. And again, Pier 60 southbound, and you can see the number of people and you can see the aerial view at the same time. Let's go to the next one. So this is about 3:00 PM, Clearwater Beach, this is Pier 60 northbound. By this point, the south area from Opal Sands up to the Hyatt, those access points have been closed. We are redirecting people. I can tell you that from being there, and I spent a lot of time on Clearwater Beach on Saturday, I can tell you that that south area was full. In, in some cases, some would say it was thick. But in order to really have an understanding for what was happening, you needed to be there. Because taking a photograph or taking a view at a distance and just looking out over the heads and also looking at it top to bottom from the helicopter down, is, is that there are some that would have some concern about it, and I understand that. But being down there on the ground and seeing it, I can tell you that people were spread out. Yes, there were a lot of people there. Yes, there were groups. But they were six feet apart and they were staying in their groups, and people were taking it seriously. And when they needed to be nudged, they were, by the law enforcement officers were there and people were cooperating. I'd say that that area on Clearwater Beach reached its capacity. And again, this is without the hotels being open, and that's what gives me concern here, and you'll see some other places. So we're going to need to watch this as we move forward. And there, it does have its limits, and I think that limit was reached in some of these places. Go ahead to the next one. So this is Clearwater Beach, again, on Saturday at about 3:00 PM. That's the beach adjacent to Fifth Street and around Frenchies there in, in the same general area from overhead. Go ahead, Brian. We moved down to Passageway. This is back to Wednesday. I'm showing you Wednesday and Saturday, show you weekday and a weekend. Again, looking out, this is looking south to north, of course, that's the Doncesar in the background on the left photo. This is that you look out over that and, you know, reasonable perspective would be, you know, it looks like there's a lot of people out there. Maybe that it's, it's, it's not going so well and people aren't adhering. But at the same time, you look up to the right and you see that people are spread out, and when you're there on the ground, it really doesn't look as, as bad as it's portrayed by a photograph. Go ahead. Passageway again, Saturday around noon, same thing. You see the tents, the umbrellas, and you see the aerial view. Go ahead. So now we move up to Indian Rocks again Wednesday. And I can tell you on Indian Rocks, even though you see all those umbrellas, you see the chairs, you see the people, that was pretty thin, really, when you're out there on the ground. And, and when you're there on the ground, there was no concern on Wednesday. You see the aerial view. Go ahead. We move to Saturday, same thing. Again, a lot of umbrellas, chairs, and that, the umbrellas and the chairs when they're out there also add to, I'll say, the clutter and add to the perception of how many people are actually there and whether the beach is too full. Go ahead. The Doncesar Wednesday, pretty empty. Go ahead. About noon on Saturday, again, they got so many umbrellas out there, and those umbrellas and chairs really do, especially at a distance as you're looking out, give you a very different perception than what is actually occurring. Go ahead. So Dunedin Causeway Wednesday, no problem, pretty spread out. Go ahead. And then this is Dunedin Causeway as we get into Saturday. The problem with Dunedin Causeway is, is that the beach area itself is so narrow, especially on the north side. The south side has a little bit, but it just fills up very fast. Originally, the state had limited capacity to Honeymoon Island to 3,000 people. The capacity in the park is 6,000, and discussions with the Secretary of DEP, he agreed to take it up to 4,500. But as I told you in the numbers I gave you a few minutes ago, by late morning, that filled up on Saturday. And that's probably going to happen again this weekend, and it will for sure happen over Memorial Day. And right now, they're not intending to bring it up to 6,000 because they don't have the staff for maintenance and cleanliness, et cetera. So there, that's the reason, because they don't have the people to manage the additional resources in the park. Okay, go ahead. Fred Howard, again, Wednesday gives you a view of it, the ground view and the aerial view, and same thing. There, there, there is appropriate spread. It's not that busy. Go ahead. Now we move to Saturday, Fred Howard. Fred Howard got full. We knew it would. You can see the people, but even in that photo, that photo, I think, doesn't look that bad. But you can certainly see from aerial is they are spread out up there, and, and we're keeping them spread out. And that's why the deputies we had at this point, I think, between Tarpon Springs Police Department's helping us out up there. I think we had about six officers and deputies that were on the ground and just asking people to keep the distance and to move them. And I'll tell you, the, the, the reason why we're having success with this is because of being managed. If it wasn't being managed, I'm not sure where we would be. We saw some beaches in Florida that opened, and they had to close them back down again this week because of, they were just too dense and there was not appropriate distancing going on. They were having problems. And of course, that's why this effort, we want to avoid that. We want this to be successful. Go ahead. Again, another view of Fred Howard. Go ahead. So now we're in Honeymoon Island, again, again, Wednesday, give you the view. Go ahead. We move into Saturday, and you can see there's more people there. Go ahead. Gandy Beach Wednesday. Go ahead. Started to fill up. We ended up having to close off intermittently Gandy Beach on Saturday as well. Go ahead. Fort Soto, again, it filled up down there. Go ahead. And just the parking, you can just kind of scroll through these last few. Fred Howard, Indian Rocks. I think that's it. So the plan going forward is, is that we're down right now this week, I say down, it's still a very significant increment. We're down to about 120 deputies that are out there during the week. We're looking at the hotspots and so far in the last couple of days, haven't seen any problems. We did have to last night, though, close down Dunedin Causeway. It did get thick out there last night about seven o'clock. Way too many people, and they just couldn't practice the appropriate distancing. There was a Jeep night out there, and it filled up, so we did shut it down last night. Coming into this weekend, we're going to staff it, and then going into Memorial Day, we will be back at 300 again. And it'll be the full intensive effort that we did this past weekend. The dashboard will be active again Saturday morning at nine o'clock. It'll be active all day Saturday and all day Sunday. We're not going to use the dashboard during the week unless circumstances warrant. And then the dashboard will be back up again on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday of Memorial Day weekend. And again, people have used it. I'm sure they will. It's great help to everybody. And then at that point, you know, my thought is, is that at that point, we will be three weeks or so from the opening of the beaches. And that's the point where we really need to look at, based on what we've been told by the medical experts and is, and the epidemiologists, is that's the point. That two, three week mark is where you're going to see the effect of your actions and whether you have a problem. So at that point, after Memorial Day, we start looking at the number of new cases. Do they remain the same? Do they go down? uh, we start looking at uh the number of new cases. Do they remain the same? Do they go down? Uh, do they increase the percentage of positives? And looking at the overall uh number of testing, et cetera, in conjunction with that and see what we do. I can tell you that I am happy and glad and more than willing to put forth this effort that we're putting forth uh to make this successful. But this is not sustainable forever. We can't do this with hundreds of deputies out there and continue to do what we do throughout the summer. So at some point, we gotta take the training wheels off. At some point, uh we have to have changed the culture uh so people understand what they have to do and they're doing it on their own. Or uh that the numbers are such that we're okay with letting it go and seeing what happens uh into a next stage or a phase. So we'll continue this uh through Memorial Day and then have a discussion with you all and see uh what we want to do uh at that point. But I suggest we let the data uh inform us uh and and help drive the decision. But you know, again, we can do this for a while, uh but we can't do this forever uh with this level of intensity. And and I know that that's what's um giving us a success because we've just got so many people out there with what we're doing right now.
Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah, uh, first of all, uh Sheriff, I wanted to say thank you to you and your uh all the deputies that are working uh so hard this past uh couple of weeks and obviously in the next couple of weeks. Uh, it's a it's a lot going on out there and um, I know that I talked with Pete Kruebler out at Honeymoon Island and he was um up, you know, just when he and I were talking, was just very appreciative of the work that you all were doing out there. Um, not only for his, for the Honeymoon Island, but also for Dunedin Causeway. It just like I said, like you said earlier, I don't know what would happen if you guys hadn't been out there to help manage the process. So I really wanted to tip my hat on the dashboard. That's just a a great tool. Uh, also wanted to thank you for allowing me to go up in the helicopter on Saturday and see what you're talking about uh firsthand. Even on Gandy Boulevard, when you have almost like eight or nine access points, there was a a police office, the sheriff deputy at each one of those spots and uh and clearly having a good handle on it. So if you needed to shut it down, you could shut it down rather quickly. So it was pretty responsive. Um, there are some, yeah, obviously some some hotspots. You mentioned them. There's a couple of the uh of the uh spoil islands that were um pretty busy. Um, it's hard to manage them. You go out there and you separate them and then you leave and those there's empty spots to go back to. So somebody new comes up and takes them. So I guess that, you know, the the message just is everybody just be, just try to be as careful as you can when you're doing it and try to follow the rules as much as possible. Um, in a perfect world, it'd be great for a while just to have Pinellas County residents using the beaches. And that's just in a perfect world. That's not gonna happen. Just a question, what is your thoughts um Barry or or Sheriff uh about, you know, letting the hoteliers know, I think you may have mentioned it earlier in the week, but letting the hoteliers know that we could be shutting beaches down. I'm not talking about closing the beaches like like we, you know, they were before, but I'm just saying shutting them down so you could have people coming from all over the place and not being able to get onto the beaches. Um, and they're just gonna have to deal with that. So is there a process about getting the word out to them just to let them know to?
Yeah, I I want to do that for sure and let them know because again, it's all about managing expectations and people know. And I know the concern that I I hear it. Uh, is is that you got people in some of these places that are paying three hundred bucks a night for a hotel room and they may not get on the beach. Um, but the other option is, a- and I I'm sure that there are a lot, including, I would think, all seven members of this commission that w- would not be saying good things to me if we let it get to a point where um, we had the mess that they had down in Naples uh this past week or that we had previously on Clearwater Beach or we had previously in other places. So if the option is, is that we don't abide by the order, we let the density get too thick, we got people all over each other, they they're not staying in the proper groups, not properly spaced. Uh, because people came and they want to be on the beach. Th- th- this is why I'm messaging this so strongly and so often that this is not business as usual. This is not just you come, you're gonna get on, cram as many people and everybody do what they did, you know, four or five months ago or six months ago or last summer. This is a different environment and it's about managing those expectations. So we are, we have, and we will continue to get with uh the hotels. One of the things I want to do uh and do between now and Memorial Day is uh to have some cards printed up that have the dashboard and advertise the dashboard. I'd like to see the hotels give everybody that's checking in uh information about the dashboard so they use it. And with the messages get there early and so they know uh even in in Clearwater and St. Pete Beach and uh some of these others, Treasure Island, where they have a number of hotels, is know what's open and get there. So the more we can help them uh help us and it can be a partnership, but we've got to work with the hotels on this because otherwise there's gonna be a lot of disappointed people.
And Commissioners, um, we did uh did Commissioner Eggers and I discussed this yesterday and as a result of that, we started reaching out to those hotels. So we're trying to get updated data for the weekend. We can provide that to the sheriff. We're gonna continue to do that next week to give him a little insight in terms of what they're seeing in occupancy. And as part of those calls, also reminding them about the enforcement effort um and the need to manage the beach capacity uh so they can inform people when they're calling and reserving a room or or whatever. So um, between the efforts of the sheriff and our staff, we'll we'll make sure that they're well informed.
Yeah, I think I think that the crowd that you're talking about and then obviously the um uh we heard something, I think Dr. Jameson mentioned that he had heard from somebody that, you know, we're, you're looking at more like three to four weeks out to see the results of what you did. I think Sheriff, you mentioned it a minute ago. So we're gonna have to really be watching that carefully. And contrary to a couple of people out there that make the the snide comments that we like doing what we're doing, we like controlling things, that's not true. We really would like to get back to normal completely and just not have any of this to deal with. But we gotta try to do this responsibly. Um, so we're just begging people to just be safe and be respectful of others. If you're not being respectful of the person right next to you, at least think about the all of the folks that are in our medical system that are trying to take care of people and the folks in our in the uh nursing homes that need those beds and just try to pace yourselves a little bit or, you know, this, we gotta try to control this. And I know, I know the sheriffs, you're very concerned about next weekend and I think people just need to be very careful about how they go about uh enjoying themselves out there. Just just.
Thank you, Commissioner Wong.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Sheriff, I too would like to just say thank you so much for all of your efforts. I know it's not easy, especially in this weather. And I've seen your deputies out at the marinas and in the parks and they're just doing an incredible job of keeping everybody in a nice uh healthy place mentally and with their emotions as well. My question is, given all the attention that you've got with your force out on the beach, what's happening with our crime rates throughout the county?
Nothing's increased, you know, everything's uh status quo, really. Everything's fine. Of course, the jail count is down significantly, starting to creep back up a little bit, but nothing uh out of the ordinary. Um, but as far as crime's concerned, and I've had a number of inquiries from some of you and from others, uh, but uh a- and one of the questions I get just i- is what about domestic violence? What about family violence and those types of things? We have not seen a str- a significant increase. So um, everything I'd say is going fine uh in that regard. And what we are seeing again, I'll tell you, it helped for everybody. And we're trying to get arms around it, but it's the age old thing. And Commissioner Welch, this is the problem that dear and dear to you and to me, is uh young kids out there breaking into cars and stealing cars. And we're seeing, we are seeing an uptick of that. Uh, it's a problem. It's the same problem we've seen for the last several years. And I knew it was coming uh as soon as the kids were out of school. Uh, and even though they're technically in school, they're not physically going and and we did see it and uh, that is a problem, Commissioner Wong, and we are seeing that again. But that's nothing new and and we're we have, it's in Feather Sound, it's in Palm Harbor, it's in Seminole, it's in you know, all different areas of the county and 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 a lot of the kids that we see, not all of them, but a lot of them are coming out of St. Pete. And it's because that's what happens. And this is what we've seen over the last four or five years. And so um, you know, that 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 we're seeing again, and I'm concerned about that. But it's the same is that we can't solve that problem. Uh, there's so many factors that go into it. We push it back and we are pushing it back. But it it keeps regenerating itself. It's that whack-a-mole game is is that they keep doing it, we keep pushing them back, but it's not solving anything.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Uh, yes, Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And and you, we've talked a lot about already this morning about the how sustainable this model was and and I think there was a a lot of pent up pent up demand for the beach where the person hasn't been on the beach in a year. Uh, they wanted to go in that first week. So I I think we're gonna get back to kind of a normal pattern of a couple of concerns um is if we have folks coming from Pasco or Hillsborough, which I know we had a lot from Hillsborough from what we heard from people who were looking at the website. How the how well we're gonna be able to keep that data and how we're gonna look at it a regional kind of data. Um, and without the tracing, I don't know. You know, I don't know how good the data, it's gonna have to be more kind of boots on the ground view of what's going on out there more so than the the tracing unless we really get into tracing really well. Um, so welcome your your thoughts on that, but uh I think the ability to ramp up for big weekends, Fourth of July, those kind of weekends is probably as effective as anything and kind of making sure folks know that we're gonna have a presence. The most positive co- comments I've gotten are about the dashboard. Um, it's been well received by the public. It's been well received by the media. And uh, quite frankly, even if this wasn't happening today, uh certainly for at least Clearwater Beach, it's something that the city or the chamber or the C V B should kind of look at doing uh for the long term. I think it's been really well received and a well utilized tool.
Yeah, Commissioner Walsh.
You're muted, Commissioner Walsh.
That's what happens when I follow justice. Um, so I also wanted to thank the sheriff uh for his work on this. I wanted to work backwards uh on the car theft issue. Sheriff, you and I had talked about this several times. I just wanted to mention that I had a Zoom meeting with the urban uh youth uh farming group down in St. Pete. Carla Bristol heads that up last week. And I always ask the young folks, what do you think we can do to try to impact this? And one of the things they said is there's no messaging that we can relate to um from our perspective to talk about the impacts of auto theft. And you and I talked about that uh very approach. So um, when you get some free time, I'd like to talk to you about that again and see if we can get that going because it really struck me that they were saying the same exact thing, that the messaging needs to be there for young people. Um, getting back to the issue of the beaches. Um, I think as as Commissioner Justice said, we, you know, there's imperfect information. We, or I think it was Commissioner Eggers, that it might be three or four weeks out before we see impacts. But then there's also, how do you establish a causal relationship between was it the beaches, was it the nail and hair shops, was it the barber shops? Um, you know, I sent you a note about a restaurant that I saw and I saw a couple of those cases where folks really just were not social distancing at all. So it's gonna be kind of hard to say this caused this to happen three or four weeks later. So I just think we're gonna be uh in an era of of trying to make a decision with imperfect information. Uh, but I do think you've done a a great effort uh with this going forward. The the beaches, the hotels that have private beach access like on St. Pete Beach, are they gonna face the same kind of impact that you're concerned about or are they kind of buffered because they have private beaches?
No, we're watching it all. Uh, and and you know, we're gonna ask in them to to help us. We're, you know, you know, they they should be handling it themselves. Um, and they should be responsible business owners and and uh, and making sure, and a lot of them are. Uh, and you know, as we move forward and some that are closed now open, uh, we'll get the messages out to them and uh to the ones that is their uh occupancy increases is that we want them to be good partners. We have a few that we know are are hotspot locations and we've got deputies in some of those to help them. But I tell you, the the partnership with the management and the employees of some of these businesses uh has been very good. They're they're very receptive because they know uh in order for them to not just succeed uh but to thrive at the highest levels is that this has to work. And and if it's not working, where they're not following this and we come back and say, look, we got some serious problems and here are the places we got serious problems. You know, uh, somebody uh might make a decision that things get shut down again. They don't want that. So I think that everybody is is cooperating. So we have good partnerships with the businesses, but we're gonna put a lot of that on them too. We'll work with them and we'll help them. But they need to step up and uh on their on their properties. They're moving chairs around, they're setting it up uh for distancing. So overall, it's been a good, uh, I'll call it a public-private partnership to get this done.
And you think businesses are understanding that this is not business as usual? I mean, I gave you a couple of examples of things I've observed on Beach Drive Friday night and Gulfport. Were those anomalies or are folks kind of being casual here?
Well, uh, maybe a little of both, you know, it's not perfect, uh, but overall it's good. And you know, the ones that you uh told me about, we addressed. Um, you're gonna see it in some places and some people need a little bit more of a nudge than others. But the ones that when we do nudge them and we do say, hey, uh, look, you need to get with the program here, they're doing it and they are responsive to it. You know, just like everything, you're gonna have some people that try and push the envelope a little bit and but I I think uh from what they just went through, nobody wants to get shut down again. So I think that this, the the message is very clear uh of what's at risk uh if this doesn't go well. And I think that's a real uh motivator for them. So you know, I, you know, if you see it and I tell anybody, you know, encourage you to, you know, let us know and and if we need to. Uh, but by and large, uh, by and large, um, from what I see in the lack of complaints, the other thing I'll mention is is that we've had this call center and tip center up um now for like the last six weeks. And you remember in the early stages of this, we were getting three and like four hundred calls a day in the tip center. And a lot of them were complaints about non-compliance is is that um we're gonna close the call center down this Saturday. Uh, because right now we're averaging somewhere now about eighty calls a day, but most of them are questions and they're information. We're now only getting one or two tips a day. That's a good thing. Uh, because things have changed and people are seeing less, so they're calling in less about complaints. So I I think that's the landscape that we're seeing.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anybody else? Okay, um, so we're talking about extending our local state of emergency. That's what that was all about.
That's correct. So the resolution is to extend it from this Friday to the following Friday.
Right. Do we have any uh public comment on this?
At this time, uh, if there are any members of the public that wish to speak on this item, uh, please hit star nine if you're on the telephone or please hit the raise hand button if you're in the application. And Madam Chair, it does appear we have three uh members of the public that wish to speak. Uh, our first speaker is on the telephone line, last four digits, seven, one, seven, three. Uh, if you can go ahead and give us your first, last name, uh spelling, give us your address and then you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hey, good morning. Uh, this is Robert Radomski. Uh, last name is spelled R A D O M S K I. Uh, Clearwater Beach. Um, I have more of a general um uh comment and message. Uh, personally, I really appreciate what um what you all have done to help the people and the businesses in the county emerge from all the restrictions. But uh anticipating an increase in new cases and or hospitalizations, I'd like to be proactive in urging the commissioners to stay the course and not be influenced by uh fear, news reports, uh politics. Um, if seven or six or seven weeks of restrictions and business shutdowns didn't eliminate or significantly lower the spread of the virus, it's unlikely that another six weeks or even six months of shutdowns will be any more effective. So, you know, one thing a return to shutdowns and restrictions is sure to do is cause irreparable damage to our livelihoods and businesses. Uh, so in the face of any new increase in infections or hospitalizations, and I think we can kind of anticipate that, um, even if we're not where we think we need to be in terms of testing or contract uh contact tracing, I'd encourage the committee to approach things under the assumption that maybe this virus can't be beaten, it cannot be beaten. Um, that it's here to stay. And I urge you all to respond in a way that reasonably balances the health and safety of the citizens uh along uh with their ability to operate and move about. Perhaps it's with mandatory use of masks or additional capacity restrictions or placing harsh consequences on individuals and businesses that don't follow protocols. But please don't return us to a shutdown. Focus on finding a balance that is in the best interests of all. One last comment on testing. Uh, we don't know the relationship between an increase in new cases and more testing. It seems that that's always a question. So I suggest looking at how we track new cases as a percentage of tests taken and use that as data point to help us understand that better. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Dawn. Uh, I don't have a last name, so Dawn, if you'll go ahead and give us your first, last name, spelling, address, and you'll have three minutes to address the commission.
Hi, good, good morning. I hope
Good morning.
Fine.
Yeah, we can hear you.
My name is Dawn, D A W N Jenkins, J E N K I N S. I live in unincorporated Miles County. Uh, first off, I wanted to thank you all. I know this has been a very tough task. I've been hearing your frustrations and I appreciate that you've got our best interest and heart. Um, I did have two issues I wanted to ask about. The um, the beach with the deputies. I am assuming, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but some of these deputies I am assuming, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but some of these deputies are getting overtime for the speech duty. And how long is this expected to last? Because I am concerned of the cost. And what it's going to mean to the public in the long run, because. The reality is you're gonna have to raise taxes probably. And that's more money out of our pocket. That's one of the concerns. I appreciate everything that the sheriff's doing for it though, because I know it's a tough task. We drove by this weekend. Did not stop because it was kind of crazy, too many people. I also had a question about the salons. I know it wasn't your decision to open them, but how is that working? Because we're supposed to maintain a six-foot distance. You can't do that at a salon. Between the person who's cutting the hair and the person who's sitting in the chair, you're very close. And personally, I don't feel that. People who are cutting hair are going to be the safest with PPE. Again, I I could be totally wrong, but I don't know how that's working, so I'm hoping that you all can give me some guidance. I could use a haircut too, but there's no way I'm going near a salon at this moment. That's it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Sheriff, our next speaker is Trevor Burgess. Mr. Burgess, if you can go ahead and give us your first last name, spelling, address, and you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Great, this is Trevor Burgess, T R E V O R B U R G E S S. I'm the CEO of Neptune Flood, one of the fastest growing. Insurance technology companies in the country. I'm building a new five million dollar headquarters in downtown St. Petersburg. And I will not be sending my employees back to the office absent effective anti-virals or. A vaccine until testing, tracing, and isolating those positive is best in class. In listening this morning, I was very confused about the disconnect between the need for more ICU beds. Because we are moving nursing home patients to hospitals. And the reopening of beaches and salons. According to the State of Florida report shared by Dr. Cho in the last week. Pinellas has seen a hundred and twenty-two new cases, up from eighty cases the week before. That's up fifty-three percent. What is more concerning is that Pinellas has only met the CDC testing guidelines in two of the last fourteen days. In the last week, the county's Facebook page has posted eight times about beaches. And zero times about testing. May fourth was the last post about testing. We have real-time beach access technology, but can't do daily COVID dashboards. So two questions. Why don't we test all county employees, sheriff's officers, long-term care employees? Partnerships with private employers, if we have excess capacity, why don't we use it? And second. While Florida as a whole may be falling, we as a county are not. Again, week over week, our case count is up fifty-three percent. Why are we following the governor's reopening in lockstep? Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Sheriff, we have one remaining speaker, Mr. ZD Atkinson. Mr. Atkinson, if you can go ahead and give us your spelling address and you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Good morning. My name is Zeb Atkinson, it's, or Zebby, Z E B B I E, Atkinson is A T K I N S O N. I'm the president of the Upper Pinellas NAACP. I live in Tarpon Springs. First, I wanted to say that I was completely appalled. At the last meeting I was on by the comments that were written by the people that were listening. As the commissioners and the sheriff go about trying to do the job of keeping us all safe. To that end, I still have the same question regarding. Testing in the poor communities. I wrote a letter to the commissioners, I wrote a letter to daycare, Advent Health, I wrote a letter to. The. Pinellas County Health Commission. Still trying to find out and and thank, I want to thank them for, you know, the centers that they do have open. But, you know, if there are some walk-up type things that people could do, if there's some pop-up type things that they can do. If the healthcare people can walk in the poorer disadvantaged neighborhoods, black and and brown people are the ones that are getting this more than anybody else. It's already been said that Pinellas County is not doing the amount of testing or posting the amount of testing. That should be getting done. And I think at the last meeting, I asked. Or it was mentioned that if there could be a breakout by zip code. Who got tested, when they got tested, you know, that kind of thing. I understand that. Lost my train of thought now. I understand that, you know, more is being done, but, you know, if if there's a. Anything extra that could be done, again, I offer myself and my branch, if you need it. Just give me a shout. And to the sheriff, I meant to mention the last time I called that, you know, I applaud the work that you did prior to opening the beaches. To make sure that everyone would be safe. And I believe that is it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Sheriff, there are no other speakers to be heard.
Okay, thank you. That's the case. I'm ready to entertain a motion. To extend the state of emergency another week.
I'll make the motion. I do have a question though, after the vote, if we could, Madam Sheriff.
Yes.
And I also have a question after the vote.
Okay. Commissioner Walsh. Oh, after the vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Anybody have any questions before? Okay, yes, Commissioner Long.
Yes, thank you, Madam Sheriff. I'm okay with extending where we are for one more week. My question though is. At what point will we, is, are we following the, I think it was a recommendation by the sheriff. That after Memorial Day weekend, we'll be in a better place to identify if what we're doing is working or not. I'm troubled by the numbers that. Mr. Burgess just referenced, given the increase. Which I understand a large part of it is from our. Long-term care facilities, but that is deeply troubling to me as well. Because as you heard from this morning, nobody answers any of the questions. All they do is beat around the bush. About who's responsible, who's accountable, why aren't they accountable, et cetera, et cetera. I'm so over it. And I guess I'd like to know, given we're extending for another week, I'm assuming. At what point do we? Have a discussion about? The results of what we're doing.
Well, we do have a discussion later on in this agenda about. Reopening plans, and I assume that will be part of that.
Terrific, and I look forward to that very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Welch, second by Commissioner Seal. All in favor, say aye, raise your hand, whatever. Opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Walsh.
So two follow-ups on the comments from the public. First, working backwards. Community Health Centers does have a Clearwater site that we talked about last time. My question, I guess, to Dr. Cho is, are y'all discussing? A potential pop-up site in Clearwater and other parts of the community that might not have access right now?
Yes, to answer your question, as you all recall, we've done the two in in St. Petersburg. We're gonna be hopefully. Shortly working with Pinellas Park and then looking at other opportunities, very preliminary on some pop-ups up in North County as well.
Okay. And and the second just comment related to Mr. Burgess's comments, I think it goes back to. What Commissioners Egger said very early on in conversation is there's this, you know, kind of. Hunger for information out there in the community and our marketing staff is putting out a lot of informations. And we kind of know where to go to find things. But on the testing, for example, I know that marketing has sent us testing info and I've posted. A lot of that on my social media as well about testing, but. I think if, you know, we had such success with the sheriff's dashboard on the beaches. Can we not put up a a quick dashboard that summarizes this kind of info in one place? So folks can just see it and we can just.
So the the testing information that you're provided today. The the big piece that they've been working on is the long-term care information and there's a lag, and so that's, that was the. The information that was, we were trying to merge. You'll have a daily report, it'll go to our COVID site at our website, so you have a daily dashboard. That'll be updated with daily counts. It'll be weekly, it will take out the long-term care information. Because that don't need to be weekly because of the way they receive that information. All of that, all the rest of the testing information will be updated daily and on our website.
That'd be perfect. Thank you, Barry.
Thank you. Commissioner Seal?
Yes, I. The citizens did ask some questions and one of the questions was. That I think we should address is, is there overtime being spent in the sheriff's budget or? Do we know approximately what that is?
So I don't have a number. Yeah, of course, we're spending some overtime, but it's not a lot. Most of this is being staffed by personnel that are being reassigned from other tasks. You know, we have the courthouse is is closed, we had eighty deputies that are assigned normally to court security, so they're all being repurposed to this operation. School resource officers, school's not in session. And any of the overtime that we are incurring is gonna be reimbursed by FEMA, so. It it's, and what we are expending is not much because we're we're just. Repurposing existing personnel to accomplish this, so it's not some exorbitant amount. And whatever we are, again, is already in the process of being submitted for reimbursement to FEMA, so. It shouldn't have a adverse budgeted impact.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. There's nothing else on that issue. Let's move on to behavioral health.
Item number two, Commissioners, is the behavioral health. We had KPMG Consulting conduct a review of our adult behavioral health system. We provided that report out to you and I would ask Lourdes Benedict to lead us through this discussion.
Give me one sec, Barry. I'm promoting her to panelists right now.
Okay, great. Thanks, Barry. Lourdes Benedict, Assistant County Administrator. Good morning, everyone. And as you recall, in December, we hired KPMG to review our our health system. They've reviewed a great deal of data and reports. They've interviewed a wide variety of stakeholders. And the goal for today is to hear from them on the ninety-seven-page report that was completed. That report was provided to you as well as many individuals and groups that participated. In this project, it was it was shared very widely. Our goal was to be very transparent and have lots of stakeholder and community participate in this project. So I want to take a minute, first of all, to thank all of those who participated. And also to thank our team. They spent a lot of weekends, nights, working on this. It took a lot of hours to to get here today. KPMG observed that our behavioral health services is consistent with those found in other jurisdictions. With a more mature continuum of care, so that's that's good news. Their recommendations focus on improved analysis, optimization, and coordination of existing programs. Before any further investments are considered. I gotta say, personally, I don't think anything that I read or heard during this project was a surprise. I don't know that it'd be a surprise to anybody. Watching today, and we do have lots of folks who are invited to participate and and watch in this today. So with no further ado, I'd like to introduce Bill Zizik, who is KPMG's Managing Director. And it's been a real pleasure to work with Bill and his team, and I know he's gonna introduce his team, so. There you go, Bill. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Lourdes. Good morning. Can I be heard?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. So good morning, Madam Sheriff and members of the board. My name is Bill Zizik, Managing Director and your KPMG Engagement Leader over the last five months. It is our pleasure to be here today representing KPMG to. Provide you with what we believe is an exciting and ambitious strategy to elevate behavioral health here in Pinellas County. Let me begin by thanking your board for this opportunity to present our final report. And strategic roadmap for the adult behavioral health system in Pinellas. And complimenting the board's foresight and leadership in commissioning this effort. Given its importance to your communities. This effort is about how the system of care is putting county residents and their needs first. And let me also acknowledge the difficulties that the county and its communities have faced in recent months due to COVID-19. We recognize this has been a difficult time and our heartfelt thoughts are with you. Next slide, please. With me today is Brendan Davis, your KPMG Engagement Director, a member of our National Performance and Operations Strategy Team for Government. And a native-born Floridian. Also with us is Vivian Damian, Executive Director with KPMG, a former clinician. And healthcare executive who serves as our global mental health and addictions expert. A brief word on KPMG before we get into today's agenda. We are an international advisory firm, have offices across the state. And we are deeply committed to supporting counties in Florida and across the United States in improving outcomes and better serving communities. We are proud sponsors of and contributors to NACO, the National Association of Counties. On the subjects of behavioral and primary health as well as injustice and public safety. Our international team of professionals includes former healthcare and public safety practitioners. Along with attorneys, accountants, analysts. Who together seek to bring national and global best practices to fit your local context. Next slide, please. Our presentation today is an overview of our nearly one-hundred-page report. Representing our analysis findings and recommended strategies from five months of engagement with county administration, Pinellas County Human Services. And the over fifty provider and funding, funding partners in your community. And many other system partners who contributed their insights, data, and time to this process. We thank them sincerely for their input throughout. As you can see, our remarks for today are scheduled for approximately sixty minutes, with an additional up to sixty minutes allotted for questions and discussion. And we thank you for giving us this time today with you. Next slide, please. As a reminder of the original intent of this effort, our objectives were to develop recommendations to. Enhance integration and outcomes at the system level. Across providers, across various funding sources for the benefit of county residents. We sought to build upon the good work of the county funding partners and the provider community in pursuit of these goals. The report we had submitted to the county provides a vision. For innovation and a cross-system roadmap to a more integrated continuum of care. We have also offered a spectrum of options and implementation pathways. Along with a framework to prioritize those pathways based on effort, investment, and impact to your clients. Next slide. Throughout our strategy development process, we noted several practices to highlight and commend that reflect best practices we see nationally. These commendations represent a strong foundation which the county and the system of care can build on going forward. These include cross-systems leadership and collaboration found in the PICA, Pinellas Integrated Care Alliance team. Investment in intensively engaging with high-need clients through the PSET or Pinellas Community Empowerment Team, for example. A focus on enhancing cross-system data sharing through the Data Collaborative and Care Connect initiatives. Supportive services and grant programs pursued for enhancing services to homeless clients and opioid users. And finally, in the receiving and diversionary programs, diverting clients away from crisis settings such as jails and hospital emergency rooms. Overall, the behavioral health system of care in Pinellas operates abroad and mature set of services. Across the mental health and addiction spectrum, which we do apply. Next slide. There were five key questions posed at the outset of this effort. There were five key questions posed at the outset of this effort to guide the project. And while we reshare our conclusions upfront today, you'll hear the supporting rationale from Brendan and Vivian throughout the remainder of the discussion. Firstly, the question was, do we have the data to know how well our system of care is performing among a number of dimensions, terms of access, capacity, productivity, quality? And our answer, based on our review, is that not yet, we do not. Secondly, should we build new marchman facilities or expand current capacity? And again, our answer is not yet until we have better system-level data on capacity, utilization and productivity of the system as a whole, as well as the capacity that has been added in more recent months. Number three, should we increase case management to better accommodate the Baker Act population and ensure no one falls through the cracks? And again, our answer here is not yet until a further evaluation of how existing case management capacity is utilized. Our conclusion on these first three questions do not mean that there is no data at all. In fact, there is a lot of data. However, it does mean that data is often siloed in programs or providers, not fully balanced across activities, outputs and outcome measures, and does not allow for a system-level view of capacity, wait times, utilization or productivity. In addition, our view is that the confidence that residents in need are accessing care at the right level at the right time needs to increase before further investing in higher need capacity. Number four, the question was, should we consolidate all of our contracts and funding into fewer providers? Our answer is potentially yes, once a better view of system performance is achieved. And consideration here must be given to grant funding from federal sources, which may limit any efforts to fully consolidate across the system. And lastly, number five, should we be doing more as a system of care to combat the opioid crisis? And our answer is potentially yes, building on the county's existing efforts and with improved models of coordinated access and managing of system performance. In our report, you'll see we reference case studies in Erie and Allegheny Counties, highlighting their respective approaches to medication-assisted treatment and rapid community follow-up. We believe these counties can be instructed in terms of additional measures that can be considered here in Pinellas. We also feel that close integration of treatment for co-occurring mental health and substance abuse issues will be a critical factor to success. Next slide, please. That brings us to our recommendations for your board's consideration. Firstly, we recommend a systemic approach to performance management across all funders and providers, engaging stakeholders in the discussion of a minimum shared data set that allows improved visibility at both summary and detailed levels by program, provider, care setting and other dimensions. This initiative will allow you to answer systemic questions such as, are our clients getting better? And where do we need to shift or reallocate resources to meet demand? Second, we recommend a robust model of coordinated access. This is about further standardizing intake and assessment procedures, affording your residents in need with easier access and faster connection to services, scheduled directly into the appropriate level of care on their first call and with greater visibility into capacity and wait times across the system in matching need to capacity. This is about bringing the system of care closer to the consumer, reducing the legwork for clients, families, caregivers and clinicians, and reducing the risk of those in need of falling through the cracks. Together, we view these first two recommendations as foundational strategies to any pathway that you consider into the future and critical to improving the client's experience. We also view them as even more imperative, given the impact of COVID nineteen in terms of community need, access to care and delivery of care in a remote and often unpredictable environment with evolving guidelines for social distancing. Once these foundational efforts are underway, we believe the system of care can then begin to reevaluate action on the second tier of recommendations that we presented here. Number three focuses on more clearly identifying the right type of receiving capacity needed. Once coordinated access helps to engage clients earlier in their journey and on a more consistent basis across the system of care. Number four similarly focuses on expanding and more precisely targeting intensive case management services powered by a cross-system view of client need as well as program and provider performance. And lastly, number five seeks to leverage more consistent and comprehensive performance data at system and provider level to allow for potential consolidation of county providers into fewer performance-based contracts, not only to streamline management, but more importantly, to reduce silos of care that can benefit the client experience. Our view is that these recommendations are critically important to elevating the entire system of care and that these are no small undertakings in and of themselves, requiring investment and time to implement properly. We would also offer, however, that these initiatives are worth pursuing as they will allow the system to better serve the residents of Pinellas County. So I will now pass the following slides on to Brendan Davis and Vivian Damian once again to explain more about how we arrived at these conclusions. Over to you, Brendan.
Brendan, you're gonna have to unmute if you're, can you hear me?
Got it. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you. Uh, moving to the next slide regarding our approach. Um, so as Bill pointed out, my name is Brendan Davis. I was your Engagement Director with responsibility for the execution of the project under Bill's leadership. Um, I was on the ground with your te- with your team working over the past several months. And I want to start off by thanking everyone involved. As Lourdes pointed out, uh, your community stakeholders and the human services team, along with with the county, uh, dedicated a lot of time to this project. There was, there were no stakeholders that we requested interviews, meetings, surveys, um, that did not participate in this project. Um, that participation and collaboration was at the core of how this work was accomplished. Uh, we have a list of of some of those stakeholders here, but know that within the this list of uh, of agencies and organizations, many of the meetings we had were with groups of individuals and not a single person, uh, very senior individuals from many of these organizations also participated. Um, so a key question you must have is, how did we arrive at the content that is in the final report? Um, the first thing you should know about that is that there is nothing in the report, whether it be a theme or a finding or the resulting information that did not result from information from your community stakeholders. Uh, the first question we asked ourselves as we went through a wide array of interviews, of workshops, surveys was, where is their consensus? What themes and findings are people saying that there is general consensus about those themes? We then looked at that list and said, of those findings and themes that we've generated from the people within your community, what is supported by data? And so we reviewed finances related to the adult behavioral health system. We reviewed documents such as your, uh, behavioral health and health needs assessment conducted by the state. We reviewed data provided by the county and providers to understand, do these things make sense? Is there a consensus around those things? Finally, we narrowed the list down further by saying, of the things supported by data, the findings and the themes, are these among the things that are leading practices across the country and across globally, which we take a perspective of? And that narrowed the list down to the information contained with your, uh, within your documents and your strategy document that we've delivered. So key points take, take, to take away here is that the information contained in the report is a summary of themes and findings developed by your community stakeholders, they're data-driven and they're supported by leading practices. Let's move on to the next slide. And within those themes, while not every single person, not every single stakeholder uh, brought these things up, there were some consensus things that we identified very early on within the project and validated with your human services, uh, departments and other stakeholders. Finding number one was that the primary entry into the behavioral health system is is largely through crisis services. So that would be things like the jail, your public receiving center, emergency rooms. Um, and while not a problem and and your services are quite robust in that area, we want to move you and the county from a strategy perspective to the utilization of more prevention services. And my colleague Vivian will talk a lot more about that. The second theme that was quite robust amount among stakeholders is that silos persist across the adult behavioral health system. Um, and this is not surprising considering your unique system of multiple providers for similar types of programs. Um, and also that the county is not the major funder of these programs. Um, you are part of a broader system of care. And so those silos are systemic within, uh, that system of care. Bill pointed out, there's a lack of data-driven transparency across the system. And we want to reiterate that we receive data from several providers, the county and others. But that data was not sufficient to link together a clear picture of what are the outcomes within the adult behavioral health system within Pinellas County across a range of measures, which again, we'll dive into further. Uh, fourth, your funding structures for a variety of different reasons that are consistent across the the country, whether it be the types of funding, your your gen- use of your general funds, uh, grants at the state, federal level that are given, uh, but also funding across, um, uh, within the county for those same providers. Again, in many, in many instances, you're but only, uh, twenty-five percent of actual funding to certain types of programs and that funding is also silent. The fifth finding was that, um, based on your community health needs assessment um, and other documents we reviewed, the unique variance of needs by the various community regions um, and the geography of Pinellas County would not allow for a central receiving facility to effectively serve your fast-growing population. From these five key themes, this is how we developed the report that you, that would spend a little bit to you. I'm gonna talk to, I'm gonna pass to Vivian now to talk a little bit about where we see the future going from these five themes.
Thanks, Brendan. Can you folks hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, perfect. Thank you very much. Um, so, uh, my name is Vivian Damian. As, uh, Bill had indicated, I get the privilege of coming to work with my U- US colleagues. And I think this is our third engagement in behavioral health in the last, I think, eighteen months. So it's been a real pleasure working out in Florida. And so I want to kind of talk about, if you could just go to the next slide. And I see that that we have lots of participants on the call. And so I'm gonna really try to break it down. Uh, as Bill had said, I do have a clinical and operational background. But I'm gonna, um, try to break it down so it's really easy for people to understand how a behavioral health system looks, um, and what your system currently looks like and what we hope the future healthcare, uh, future behavioral health system looks like. So the wonderful thing is that we heard repeatedly from your stakeholders that you folks have the continuum of care and that it's, uh, it's working. If you have the continuum of care where, uh, clients can easily go from one, uh, service to another service and that there is really nothing like lagging in terms of either a step up or a step down, um, service. When you look at this triangle, we always look at the base of the triangle where it's wider. And so the reason why we want it to be wider is because we want the outpatient and early intervention and prevention programs to sit at the base. Uh, these are the ones that, uh, are often where consumers will go first. We hope that consumers will go first. They are where you could receive, you know, therapy, you could receive, um, uh, group counseling, um, AA, Alcoholics Anonymous, NA, Narcotics Anonymous, et cetera. At the center of that triangle, you're gonna see the residents are Pinellas County residents uh, and citizens, and around them is their community supports. And that community supports could be a religious affiliation, a community affiliation. But really, it's one of, it's part of their support system. The stuff above that is primary care. And we hope that individuals only get to the primary care level, either as an initial to say, we think there's something wrong. I don't feel, I'm I'm not feeling great. Um, or when the individuals within the base, so outpatient programs say, you know what, we think that you might need to go see primary care. The next level above that is your crisis services. And as Bill and and Brendan had discussed, currently, um, where individuals are coming into care is at that level, which is a crisis, uh, crisis, uh, response or receiving center. And then from there, the top above that is residential and detox. Uh, again, for those with, uh, either a co-occurring disorder, so those that have either a mental, a mental health and addiction or just an addiction. And then the peak above that is your intensive inpatient psychiatry wards. And so the base, um, is important because that's where we want consumers to to enter from. However, it's also important because it's the programs that often cost the least amount of money. And so the higher you go up in the peak, the more expensive the the services become. As you could imagine, a service that is located potentially in a hospital where you were offering twenty-four-seven care with nursing, allied staff, psychiatry, medical care, those are the ones that do escalate in cost. Of course, ultimately, we want the consumers to receive the best care uh, at the right time and by the right providers. And so we want to talk about this model, even though we have heard, uh, from your stakeholders, you currently have this model that's well-established. We need to understand a little bit more as to why we're hearing that consumers are actually accessing services through your crisis and not at the base. And we couldn't, uh, necessarily get our hands on, uh, wait time data, for example, uh, because it's not necessarily consistently measured or collected, uh, throughout the county. And of course, regardless of where you are within this triangle, we want there to be a nice seamless transition from whichever part of of the triangle, particularly the more acute parts, the peaks, the peak, uh, the peak services down to the lower parts. And that's the importance of transitioning care to the right settings. But that is really the crucial part of where case management comes in, where we are transitioning someone from crisis services to a lower acuity, uh, provider such as outpatients. But we are basically assisting them through the, through the transition to ensure that they don't fall through the cracks. Um, and that's a very important part, and particularly for individuals that have a mental health or an addiction or a co-occurring disorder. Um, and so that's how we want to see the system both i- in the future look like. I'm gonna go to the, oh, and I should also put, uh, one other comment. When we look at regular communities, not high-risk communities, but regular populations, ninety-six percent of the population can actually be serviced in the base. And so that's why it's important that the base is very well-functioning um, and consumers could access that care in a very timely fashion. So in our report, we talk about, um, we give you, uh, six buckets of opportunities. And I'm gonna cover the performance management, the coordinated access to care and the prevention and early intervention parts. And then I'm gonna turn it back to Brendan, who's gonna cover the governance, funding and the divergence. So I want to begin off by just stipulating that, um, when we were hired, we were hired to look at the overall strategy for Pinellas County. We were not hired to do a performance review of any of the providers. And I think that's really, really important to the providers, um, to understand that that wasn't our purpose. And certainly, it did not de- depict that in the report. When we received performance management outcomes, and that was one of the things that we had requested from the providers, as well as those actually that provide service within Pinellas County just to understand, uh, the overall performance of of the, of all providers within the county. One of the things that came clear through our review of the, uh, of the performance outcomes was that there really was a bit of a, a lack of, uh, data-driven accountability. Um, and there was inconsistencies in terms of the performance, uh, outcomes. And so that inconsistency could 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 have consist, uh, could have looked at, and I'll give you a, a, a few examples. One, there was, uh, outcomes that were indicated that need to be looked at, but were really not measured appropriately. Or really, there was a very high, um, focus on outputs versus outcomes. And I'm gonna give you more of those examples as to what is, what is an output. And so why do we want to ensure that we have a really well-developed, uh, performance management for the county? Uh, it's because it will help the county determine really, uh, how the organizations are performing. It will help the citizens understand, you know, if I, if I go to a particular service provider, this is what their outcomes are showing. It's showing that they're, they're providing good care and that there's success rates are X or Y. Uh, and then it will help really with the future in terms of funding for programs. We've given you three opportunities to consider. The first opportunity is to develop a county, uh, count, uh, sorry, just for those, just for those that are funded by the county and minimum data set, which is, and I'm gonna go a minimum data set, which is, and I'm going to go into the discussion, discussion as to what a minimum data set is. That's the first one. That will unfortunately work well for those programs or providers that are funded by the county. As Brendan had indicated, there's only, there's a, there's only a percentage of providers that are funded by the county. There's other providers that fund the majority of behavioral health services. And so that will take us to the second option, which is to develop actually a system-wide minimum data set. To really have a really good eye, bird's eye view as to how the system as a whole is performing. And then really, if you want to take it one step further, and when we see other jurisdictions that are quite advanced in this, you would integrate your county minimum data set or your system-wide minimum data set with funding. And so as you fund your providers, there is clear expectation in terms of what the deliverables are. And for those providers that perform well, they will continue to be funded or for those that are not meeting their targets for, for whatever reason, we would look at a different funding model for them. But the goal is to really just fund organizations that really demonstrate good outcomes for the citizens of Pinellas. And that their outcomes are aligned with leading practices and standards of care. So I'm going to take a step into a focus on outputs versus outcome measures is while it's helpful to get outputs, it's not necessarily how we make decisions or how we want to make decisions. An output could consist of, and often you'll see this in your performance management, numbers of clients served, the gender, ethnicity, if they're part of, if they're a veteran or not, average length of stay. These are all really good measures, but they don't actually tell us, does the program meet the consumers' needs? And is the program actually making a difference? As I've said, there's a currently a lack of, in terms of a system view, and it's of really no fault of anyone's other than the funding is really divided. And so to have a real clear systems view, because at the end of the day, the Pinellas citizen isn't really, truthfully, most citizens don't really care how the programs are funded. They just want to make sure that they actually get serviced and their loved ones are serviced. When we reviewed the performance measures, there was a bit of a lack of evidence to evaluate leading practices. And so we've given a couple of examples in our report that when we look at performance management, we want to ensure that it really is aligned with leading practices. There's a lag time in decision-making. And so I'll give you an example. Grants are often provided. Sometimes grants are, there's notification in short order that the grants will not be renewed for the following year. And so unfortunately, what happens is that those individuals or providers will go to the county and say, we, we need your assistance to fund our program. Otherwise, we may have to close our doors. And so in order to really determine if that program has provided good outcomes for consumers or if that program is effectively utilized, or if that program has good access to care, that information isn't necessarily easily available. And so decisions have to be made fairly quickly. Because you don't want to necessarily close doors for, for programs, but without the appropriate data to support it. And so I'm going to give you now a breakdown as to what is a minimum data set. Because that's a bit of lingo that we sometimes use, which is not helpful with when individuals don't necessarily know the details. So it's basically just the common data elements that are developed and implemented based on for diagnoses or embedded within existing contracts or funding frameworks. So it defines what is most important to be tracked and reports it, and reports it on a prompt and evidence-based decision-making and future state system. So what is the most important thing that, that needs to be measured? That is what is, needs to be part of a minimum data set. If we say it's important that our consumers improve, where there's symptom relief once they have, once they have completed the program. And that symptom relief could be, you know, the individual currently suffers from depression. They are rating their mood two to 10. They are having difficulties in terms of doing basic things day to day. We want to see that through a minimum data set, that that too has now potentially gone up to a six or a seven, whatever, whatever the target may be. That they have started improving in terms of their daily living, that they have re-engaged with employment, et cetera, et cetera. And then it defines not just the indicators, but establishes a common definition. And I think that is probably one of the most difficult things when we work with clinicians. Because we're very passionate, but it's really defining what the common definition is for those data elements. An example that we gave in our report, which I use often because they're so well-developed, is our, is assertive community treatment teams. And you folks call them fact, Florida assertive community treatment teams. This model is a global model. It was originally developed in the US, I believe it was in New York. And they're very well-established in that they have clear standards of care. And those standards have been carried out, as I've said, globally. And they've actually developed really good evidence-based practices. And so their standards of care can nicely fit into what a minimum data set is. And so I'll give you the example of, we expect that those that are involved with an assertive community treatment team is visited two to three times a week. I have tell you, I've had teams that would visit clients every single day. It really does depend on the acuity of the client. That we see a decrease in terms of, you know, hospitalizations or correctional or justice. That the individuals continue to have stabilized housing and they're compliant with treatment. So to have a minimum data set doesn't mean that you have to start from scratch. We strongly encourage that the focus is on standards of care and leading practices as you develop your minimum data set. And then of course, outcomes need to be assessed routinely. And then we need to really consider investing in the leadership and the coordination. And I say that because respectfully of clinicians, we do a really good job treating clients and consumers and their family members. Outcome data is a very foreign language to some of us. And unless you have a real keen eye for performance management, it doesn't come naturally. And that's why where I say that there needs to be an investment in terms of the leadership and the coordination of the minimum data set. At the end of the day, you can't understand what you don't measure. And so we hear your, your systems are, you have, your, your systems are very well-developed. But what we're, what we see is that consumers are accessing services through a crisis. And so again, if it's not, if it's not measured to say what access of care, you know, what access of care measures are, are consumers being seen within X number of days of a crisis? Are consumers are being serviced within, you know, seven days or 14 days, I should use 14 days, that's the standard, 14 days from the time of initial contact. Those are important things to measure. High-quality data always leads, I have to tell you, for the most part, I'd say the majority of the time leads to better outcomes. Once you give clinicians an understanding as to what they're, how they're performing, the performance naturally improves. And then it embeds continuous improvement. I often see clinicians that are eager to do better, to improve, to think about different models of care. And really become creative and better serving our consumers. And then ultimately, it improves evaluation of the funding request. So when Pinellas County then gets the request, you could get a performance review and say, you know, these, this, this program has serviced X number of consumers. Wow, they've really made a difference based, based on the outcome measures. Yes, I, we definitely see that there's value in kind of continuing to support them in the funding. So performance management measures, access challenges, quality challenges and capacity challenges. And part of that is that when you're looking at a program where we know that they've reached their max. So for example, I'll go back to the assertive community treatment team. For the most part, we, we usually, the standard says one to 10. So for every one worker, we have 10 consumers on the caseload. And once we know that they have, you know, 10, 10 staff and they have 100 clients, we know that they've reached capacity. And so any other client that is referred to that program will most likely be put on a waitlist. However, we go one step further and we say, well, if we look at the data and we see what their number of contacts, contacts are per week. Sometimes we look and say, you know, I wonder if some of your consumers could actually be at a step-down program. And we'll support that program or support that team in kind of doing that step down to say, they've stabilized, they've been quite stable for X number of months. Let's consider a step-down program with a warm handover and then some light case management from the ACTS team. And what that does is that it supports an additional individual entering into an assertive community team. An example that we gave in there is the Veterans Affairs, Department of Veterans Affairs, they've done a beautiful job of developing really standardized care for their veterans. And then they develop very clear standards for quality measures and outcome measures, not just outputs. And they've implemented them across 160 medical centers. And from there, the centers cannot just, I mean, not, the centers can utilize obviously leading practices to treat their consumers. But ultimately, they have access to data to say, hey, that clinic there seems to be doing something where their outcomes really are shining. And I want to kind of connect with that, with that program to see what is it that they're doing so we can improve our own services. And so they kind of learn from each other, which is a really great thing about having a shared data set. I'm now going to give you some examples of some of the outcomes that we, we reviewed. So for every performance review that we saw, for the ones that came through the county, at the back of the, of the analysis or the back of the outcome measure, there is a sheet that talks about define, measure, analyze, improve and control. And the individuals that have put together this sheet, I have to say, really do have a good eye for performance management. They really do. And in that, in that review, you see, you know, what we invest in. So what's the input? And then the activity of what we do, who we reach, and then you have a whole section that talks about outcome. And they nicely divide it of the outcomes of what the outputs are, what are the short-term results that we're hoping to achieve? What are the interim results, interim, meaning results that we hope to achieve? And what are the long-term results that we hope to achieve? Unfortunately, some of them did not have outcomes. They just have showed outputs. And so that was one of the things. And if, and if we were truly doing a performance review, I would have most likely gone back to the organization and said, can you help me understand why this may be? Another example is that while there's really well-defined short-term, intermediate and long-term results in your samples, unfortunately, not all of them were actually being measured. So I'll give you an example. There was one that was really well-done. It was, it's a three-year program that had been funded. I had received data for approximately 18 months of the, of the program's operation. And one of the indicators, which I have to tell you, I love seeing, is, is a six-month reduction of crisis or justice involvement post-engagement with the program. So of course, I was very eager looking through it to see, wow, let's see what they have done. And unfortunately, even though the outcome had been indicated as something that needs to be measured, it wasn't in the report. And that was not an uncommon thing that I saw through several of them. So the outcomes that were being measured were sometimes not consistent. And then the one thing that I have to say that I, I saw through several of them is that when the data had to be pulled from other sources, like from crisis or justice, it, that seemed to be the one that really was not being picked up. And I'm not quite sure if it's because they couldn't access the data, which is often the case, or what it may have been. But it would have been a really good indicator, it was so well-written, it would have been a really good one to measure. Another one where we saw is that measurements were, were being done. It was a really good indicator in terms of the homelessness population and stability in housing. There was a clear target that was, that was set. However, quarter over quarter, there was, the, the outcomes were not, the, the results did not show that they were meeting the goal. And unfortunately, it was declining as, as month over month had, had occurred. And so when you look at a performance measurement, it's always good to see what's, what is the variance? And what's the mitigation strategy? Like, how are we going to actually assist this program in meeting their targets? But it also helps the program go back to say, do we have the right model of care to really do this right? Because we're not meeting our targets, there's, there's something off, or our targets realistic. Now, in this case, I would say they, they were realistic. But I would suggest that at that point, you'd want to go back and really have that conversation with your clinical staff as a whole, as a system to say, we're funding this program, they're not meeting their targets and the percentages are actually quite low. And then again, another example of month, quarter over quarter where targets are not, are not met. However, there wasn't a clear mitigation strategy as to how to assist and improve the outcomes moving forward. So we have kind of given that, the, the point of that. Ultimately, this is a crucial thing that the county needs to consider. In order to really understand how the county or the citizen, or all services or providers are actually performing. We could continue to fund more programs. But unless we have clear outcomes that show that we're doing the job that we've been hired to do, or the providers have been hired to do, there is no, like, the, the return on the investment is not quite clear.
Thanks Vivian. Just the other, the other key element that we want to make sure we cover, probably in a little briefer format, is the coordinated access. And, and then Brendan will talk about the remaining areas. But I know we do have a fair amount of additional slides to get to. And so we may just pick up the pace a little bit, just so everybody knows.
Sorry, thank you. I was busy looking at my screen. I didn't see you guys pinging me. Thank you. My apologies. So the coordinate access model, you folks have 211 currently in place. And I have to say, I actually utilized one of the 211 just to see how it works. And to really understand the services that they provide. So one of the things that came through was that there was difficulties in accessing services. And it was unclear why there was a challenge in terms of accessing services, because you do have a well-established, well, what we thought, what we felt was a well-established 211. And so the opportunity that's at hand is one of two folds. You could establish a coordinated access model that is run within the county, or you could hire a managed entity and provider to manage the model moving forward. So the coordinated access model is very simply a 1-800 number that all consumers and families and providers and justice, et cetera, are able to contact and support an intake of, an intake into behavioral health. Which means that all of your behavioral health providers would have to agree to this model. Where we see it very effective is right adjacent to you in Georgia. They have a very well-effective, very well-established model that's quite effective, run by a third party. But has done wonders in terms of improving access to care. And so what these departments or these coordinated access models do is that they conduct the intake, do the triage, conduct screening, and screening is often done in a very standardized format through a standardized tool. They determine suitability of assessment. So the consumer may be calling in and saying, I, you know, I'm having difficulties locating housing. And then when, you know, the assessor kind of digs a little bit deeper, they realize there's mental health addictions, et cetera, other issues. And so they really provide the more, most appropriate wholesome services to the consumer. They then would do a program or service admission on behalf of the program, schedule the first appointment, provide intervention in the, in the meantime, and monitor the client's response as, until the provider then picks up the, the client for ongoing services. And so it just ensures that there are no clients are falling through the cracks. It helps with improving transparency, which I think would be very helpful for Pinellas County at this point. Because there isn't a clear point as to what the issue is in terms of accessing care. It improves access to care and improves management of demand. For example, if we know that, you know, one of your regions or subregions or in the areas has a high waitlist, it provides the county or the provider, providers an opportunity to actually maneuver some of the funding or maneuver some of the programming to meet some of those demands, or look at funding for, future funding for those programs. And it improves consistency and minimizes duplication. So consumers could go to organization A, B, C, D and E to see where they could get access. Here, it's through just one number and all of the information is within that hub. It also helps with, again, performance management and creates real clear transparency. And so the coordinated access model would have understands what the wait times are to access care. And that is not just for initial assessment, but that would also be for treatment. And then it would then help focus targeted funding. And it gives consumers the option to access care where there it may be the shortest waitlist. And so right now, the consumer may go to one provider, but if they go through a coordinated access and the coordinated access says, listen, organization A B currently has a four-week waitlist. However, organization C, which is a little bit further away from you, has a two-week waitlist. What would you choose? What's your decision? And if they have transportation, they say, yeah, you know what, I'll go to organization C because I think I want to get care faster. So as I've indicated, the Georgia crisis, an access line that's currently well-established and we use them all the time as a leading practice is a great example to look into. The prevention and early intervention model that we have recommended. So the reason why we had put this in our report quite explicitly, and I know it's quite detailed and with lots of information, is that we were a little bit in awe over, you know, we've, we've heard repeatedly that the, the system is well-established, that we have all the services that we, we need. But we, we again continue to see an increase in terms of access through crisis. We're seeing an increase in terms of homelessness. We're seeing an increase in terms of suicide rates, opiate use, opiate overdoses. And so all of these items are, that's, that's where the bit of the puzzle is. And so we, we had actually recommended in our report that really there should be a closer look in terms of the services that are at the base of that triangle to really understand what the issues are. Because if the issues are that you have all the services, but there's an issue in terms of access to care, or is the issue is that they're, the models are not actually meeting consumer, consumer needs, that's the part that needs to be flushed out. And so as you go a little bit further, we highlighted that there's, you know, when you look at substance use and abuse or co-occurrence disorders, case management, medical home model. FQHC, Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic, which I understand is not within within Pinellas, but virtual care, those are the models that we really need to evaluate to say which parts of these are not currently working. Or if they are working is the issue that its capacity. The activities need to show outcomes that demonstrate an improvement. And so I know one of the counties that we had highlighted in our report showed actually a forty one percent reduction in accidental overdoses of opiates. And so part of that was they really focused on data. They were proactive in their approach and used real time data to make decisions. But it also really focused on integrated care. And and unless you have really well integrated care models, regardless of who the provider is, consumers are going to continuously fall through the cracks. There's a high focus on ensuring that the services that are required for those consumers, in particular case management, are available and continue to be provide the appropriate case management. Case management is a standardized model. Different levels, but it is a standardized model. And we understand that you folks have a good case case management within your county. But there's, again, there seems to be a miss. And unless there's an actual review, it will be difficult to understand what the what the issues are. And so I'm going to just conclude by by stating, this might be one of the first things that you might want to look at. We we wouldn't encourage additional funding or additional programming until you really understand what you currently have, what the issue is in terms of them not meeting the current needs and why the why consumers are are coming through different avenues of that we hope would would not be the case. Thank you. And I'm going to now just turn over to Brendan to do the other three categories in terms of options.
Thanks Vivian. And those three, the remaining three are certainly tied to everything that Vivian just talked about in terms of performance and also treatment. So starting off with governance, there are two main themes here tied to performance. Are your contracts with your providers performance based contracts? And the simple answer is no. While there are requirements for reporting in traditional sense of performance based contracts, they do not provide the appropriate levers such as incentives when performance is high. I think we're moving in the slides here. Yes, staying on same slide. When performance is high, that the 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 providers are rewarded. That is kind of concept one. Remodeling of those of those before of those contracts into performance based contracts. The second is engaging a managed entity. We gave the example of Broward County. They have established a managed entity for their county. The concept here is that we are advising a range of different changes for the county and its adult behavioral health system. A managed entity can allow you to accelerate the pace of adoption of all of these practices, because they would have the skills, talent, technology, know how to quickly adopt these things. So we're not saying that the county does not have the ability to, but you could have a managed entity assist either in full, such as Broward County, where their managed entity in full manages the adult behavioral health system, or in parts, such as Vivian pointed out, establishing a new service such as coordinated access. Moving to funding, a big theme here is around consolidation of your funds. Across the country and across globally, behavioral health consolidation is something that is happening. There are well established studies by numerous organizations that show that consolidation behavioral health practices are leading to higher efficiency and cost savings. And the reduced complexity from the county's perspective would also help increase all those aspects of performance management that Vivian spoke about. Moving to the the last category of diversion, three themes here. One is enhancing public receiving service capability. We've heard that there are some gaps that exist and the report documents those. And then and possibly with the right data, enhancing your public receiving capacity. But I do want to focus on D two, which basically is is kind of the core of our recommendation. Standardizing access, whether that be services or capacity across your public and private receiving model. And the leading practice with this idea is that essentially no door is the wrong door. So when your citizens go to any type of facility, they're not going to be turned away, for instance, well, this you are, you need acute services. You need to go to this facility, or you need some acute services or emergency services. You need to go to this type of facility. You want to ensure that when people walk into a door, that door is the right door every time. And their follow up treatment will be coordinated. So it's consistent with all of the record. It's consistent with the coordinated access recommendation. So moving to the next slide. So we originally started with twenty one different recommendations and options for the county's consideration. Those were narrowed into the thirteen that we just discussed. And even at thirteen, there is some complexity there and the recommendations don't all integrate well together. And so we wanted to follow, we want to recommend some pathways that the county can initially take to start in their journey of transformation. Those pathways one through five recommended are from pathway one, high complexity to pathway five, which is relatively low complexity and low impact. So I'll focus on on pathway one only, just to give an overview of how these considerations are made. So pathway one, high complexity, develop a system wide minimum data set. So this is bringing all of your providers together, all of your system participants, which include more than the providers, other managed entities within the system, and developing a minimum data set that everyone can look at at the same time. Engaging a managed entity. This would require significant transformation from your current governance structure. Structure consolidating funding and engaging a managed entity to manage some of that funding in delivering your services to citizens. Developing a coordinated access model through a managed entity and or by one of the providers that you currently have. And standardizing access across public and private receiving models. These logical and consistent recommendations flow together and will likely take a substantial investment in time and effort across the entire system. So this will deliver the biggest bang for the buck, but also requires the most effort, but will yield the greatest results for the citizens of and residents of Pinellas County. So moving to the next slide.
Oops, sorry.
No problem.
There we go.
So we did include information on how you should consider these things. There are, of course, quicker wins that you can achieve, such as focusing on your prevention. As Vivian pointed out, there are clear indicators, whether it be relationships between the rise in opioid deaths or homelessness, that we can look at your prevention systems. You can look at your prevention systems to evaluate, how can we solve problems now? But then there are those longer term pursuits, which I believe was at the core of of this project. How do we make some fundamental changes within the county and adult behavioral health system? And you look towards that system wide change or some county focused comprehensive changes. The pathways one and two are going to be delivering high impact to citizens, but they also require some significant effort. We put in some cost ranges in there for your consideration as well to narrow down the list. But we hope this is helpful in consideration of those pathways. One last thing on the pathway is that if you start on one pathway, it does not mean that you cannot pick up other components of other pathways. So the the list is prioritized from, you know, what's going to give you the best bang for the buck. But it does not mean that at some later point, so let's say if you start on pathway one as an example, that does not mean that you cannot develop new capacity for your system later on in your journey. But this gives you at least a place to start. So I'm going to pass on to Bill now to wrap up our presentation.
Okay, under the next slide, please. So as we think about moving towards action and implementation after today, we wanted to offer a structured sequence of how you manage those efforts and ensure that prudent decisions and the right type of engagement with your funding partners and provider community are made at each step over the longer term. Firstly, there will be a course out of decisions that will no doubt follow today's presentation and consultation with county staff. But also critical to this will be engaging your largest funding partner, CFBAHN, Central Florida Behavioral Health Network, your regional managing entity across the fourteen county region, including Pinellas, to join in and work together on these efforts. Again, the the county funds twenty five percent in aggregate of the system, and the rest of the funding flows through your regional managing entity from the state. Our two foundational recommendations then position you to move through the second and third stage to better evaluate system performance and optimize coordination of access and treatment. And from there, you get into service innovation and expansion in the fourth stage. But that's underpinned by the right type of supporting data and evidence to make those decisions. And lastly, in the sustained phase, again, we're relying on continued performance based management and incentives in the system of care as a whole, and a continuous reevaluation of the investments and adjustments that are made along the way. Next slide, please. So in summary, KPMG is recommending two foundational initiatives to be considered as top priorities. The first around systemic performance management, grounded in a minimum data set, as we've covered, to truly demonstrate how well the system is performing in terms of access, quality, efficiency and outcomes. And the second, to establish a coordinated access model to simplify and speed up access for clients, families, their caregivers and clinicians as well. To maximize the benefit for your communities, both of these initiatives will require extensive engagement with stakeholders to agree on details that we enumerate and offer in our report. And both will require time, effort and investment, as Brendan mentioned, such as setting up a one eight hundred line, standardizing intake assessment and scheduling practices, and evaluating the interoperability of existing provider systems across programs and funding. These initiatives will need to focus from a project planning and coordination perspective across many system stakeholders and rely on that continuous measurement and evaluation as early benefits accrue and any adjustments may be needed. Our experience is that structured implementation is where otherwise bold and worthy initiatives can regrettably fall down. In the end, this strategy is about putting your residents at the center and inspiring better access to care, better delivery of care and better outcomes. We truly hope you share in our enthusiasm and excitement for the road ahead in elevating behavioral health here in Pinellas. And with that, I thank you again for your attention, and I'll turn it back to Lourdes to close.
All right. Thank you, Bill and team. So as you heard, I know that was a lot to digest. That was a lengthy report. But and, you know, certainly KPMG is available for a question and answer. But this is really step one. We can bring back recommendations and give everyone time to digest all of this information. But I really wanted to hear from the board how you would like to handle this going forward. And just so you know, KPMG has agreed very graciously, free of charge, to give us another approximately two months to assist with any anything else we need.
Well, I'll go first. I found the information to be pretty general and probably applicable to most systems of care in the country. I guess what I'm looking for is some very specific suggestions about what we do in in our funding environment where we're not paying for seventy five percent of the of the services, and we have no control over how that money gets spent. How do we assess ours? And we also probably have little control over what kind of information we demand from people that we don't fund. I remember that particular problem from the homeless coalition years ago. I guess I'm a little baffled also that we don't have any outcome information from CFBAHN at all. I mean, as a taxpayer, that I'm appalled. But that's just just my opinion, but yeah, I don't think this gives me a whole lot of guidance to where we need to go. Commissioner Long?
Commissioner Gerard, I absolutely echo your comments and more. This presentation that we have just spent now, what, an hour and a half listening to, is extremely similar to one that I heard at the homeless leadership board several years ago. And I know that Lourdes was there. And at the time, she was fairly new in the position she has now. But she hit the hit it right on the head when she said at the end of that meeting, I see where the problems are. We don't connect the dots. And I don't see that we've connected any dots further today than we were all those years ago. We just are like, what are those little hamsters in a cage spinning our wheels, consistently bringing up the same problem that we have had in the days when Gwendolyn Warren was still with us, for heaven's sakes. And on top of all of that, the one thing that is very glaring to me that is not included in this report is what is the bottom line dollar to all of those providers that are working on this issue? And clearly, we are no further ahead with data. I'd like to know what that money amount totals. It would be staggering, I'm sure, for us to know. Thank you.
Yeah, and Commissioner, this is Lourdes. We do have the the figures that we can refund out to everybody with the with the funding for us and and Central Florida.
And I think that's really the question, commissioners. I mean, the reason you commissioned this report is because, you know, we were being asked to do more. And the question is, is are we doing more in a strategic manner? Are we just throwing more money at an issue without coordinating the care? And we're one piece of that overall system of care. So the question is, is, you know, how to how to best go forward with that? The only way you can do that is to have a coordinated effort between the seventy five percent and the twenty five percent. And I and I would, I think, to answer your questions, I would ask KPMG to to comment on that, because that's the the real piece to say, how do we get past, you know, the hamster wheel? And doing this over again, that was just commentable.
Absolutely. So commissioners, I appreciate your comments, and I regret that you feel that way about this exercise. We do have a variety of financial data by program in our report that is broken down by source of funding and where funding is actually blended together to deliver programs in your community. With with respect to the seventy five twenty five, it is unfortunately a constraint and construct of the way the state of Florida is structured in terms of local behavioral healthcare delivery. I can say that the CEO of Central Florida has been at the table from the beginning and end of this process. They have been very forthcoming with their data. We did not mean to imply that they have no outcome data, but that we need better outcome data and more consistent outcome data across both state and state funded and county programs. Central Florida does a great job of publishing all of its outcome, the outcomes data that it does have, plus inputs and activities on its website by provider and across all of its counties. And we applaud that and think that there's some infrastructure there that could be leveraged perhaps into the future. So but this is going to be predicated on cooperation and collaboration, not only with Central Florida, but in some degrees, the county may need to decide what discussions it has with the Department of Children and Families at the state level to be able to integrate the funding that comes in more locally, again, to put the consumer first, not programs and funding silos first. So that is the challenge that that we are providing and that we've tried to enumerate in our report. And even though these are somewhat perennial issues that many systems of care across the country, especially at the county level, we do see this. And we often have to say the same things. And we often have to say the same things. And oftentimes, these concepts can be easily understood, but again, no one seems to be able to execute it and fix it. And we don't see a plan of action that shows us how it's going to get done. And so that is the challenge that we're, we are putting before. And again, this is the beginning of a process. This is the strategy-level exercise. We will work with the county over the next couple of months to customize and enumerate the additional actions from what's already in the report in each of these options and recommendations, so that you see how you're going to navigate it through your own constraints and concerns.
Okay. Well, thank you. That's what I was looking for. I didn't realize. I thought we were going to see that today, but Commissioner Peters?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I do have several questions, and I, I'm really pleased. I think you gave us what we asked for, pretty much, as I understand it. But I do have a series of questions, if that's okay. So you mentioned the Broward model, and so my question is, do they have their DCF-funded managing entity as well as a local managing entity? Because you talked about getting a managing entity. And so I wanted to know, is that a separate, you said third party, but you also mentioned Broward County. So are they using the DCF managing entity or something different, separate? And are they using both? Is it separate or the same?
So this is, this is Brendan Davis. They have a local managed entity. So their managed entity is a separate managed entity that does essentially the contracting, management of providers, performance management for the county of Broward. So it is not a regional management. It's a local management. I believe it was carved out in 2011 for the county of Broward. And then just responding to one of the previous comments in terms of kind of fundamental change and driving things forward. Again, the recommendation tied to the use of that managed entity was exactly for that purpose. How do you execute? And the core of the recommendation is not saying it's not possible for the county to execute, but consistent with some of the previous comments, has it been done before? A managed entity can be held accountable through your contracts. And so this is something that we've seen in other states. In North Carolina, for example, where there are regional managed entities, some counties have also gone to local managed entities for the management of their adult and child behavioral health systems.
Okay, just to clarify, Brendan, on that, so is Broward County's managing entity, so is their regional managing entity just giving their state funding to Broward County, whatever that lump sum is? And then that local managing entity is then dispersing it versus the regional managing entity? Like, like ours currently, the regional managing entity sends a contract to all these different individual organizations. And so are you saying that in Broward County, the regional managing entity gives all the state money to that local managing entity? And that local managing entity does the contracts? Just to make it clear.
Commissioner Peters, our understanding is that the Broward Behavioral Health Coalition is the, is the, the managing entity that Brendan is describing. The DCF funding flows directly to them in addition with the local county funding. So they're serving essentially as both, but they only cover the, the region, the jurisdiction of Broward County.
Okay. I, I, I thank you for that clarification. You also referenced the data collaborative, and I'm curious what you're describing there.
Well, if I could, I, I might ask Lourdes or her team to, to cover that particular initiative that they have ongoing.
Sure. So we have a data collaborative that we've had for quite some time with the University of South Florida that has, you know, we, we put a certain amount of, of funding in for them to run reports for us.
Okay. All right. Well, then you and I can talk about that later, Lourdes.
Yeah, and it is very high-level data, so I don't know that it's what we're looking for right now.
Okay. So then my next, I, I still have two more questions, if that's right. So on the funding portion, you stated that the county has 225%, and you talked about grants, and you talked about social action funding, I think was the two elements. But did you assess the burden of the reactionary treatments such as ambulances, transport, repeat overdose patients, grant management, that kind of stuff, when you looked at that 25%? Because I don't think we talked about transport, how transport's going to work. I, I still don't know what it's costing me in transport. I haven't gotten that data. So when we have the same overdose person 20, 20 times in one month, what that cost is? And so I don't know if that was ever part of your assessment in this evaluation.
Yeah, I, I would, I would again turn to, to Lourdes and her team on that. Though, those costs were, were not part of the evaluation if they fell outside of the funding dedicated to the programs that treat those individuals, for instance, on the PSET team. You know, so I, but I, in terms of, of that broader question, I would, I would refer that to them.
Okay, and, and I can go with Lourdes then on that.
And just so you all know, that was part, Brendan and Vivian, before you got on board, when we had our first consultant, they did meet with our EMS team, and that information is provided.
If, if I could also say too, that 25% number is, is often referenced. But as described in the report, the, the, that 25% number is tied in most part to your public receiving facilities. But the county funds a wide variety of programs to meet gaps that are not only that 25-75% match with the state. So you have programs across the entire system with multiple providers, across multiple types of programs that are not necessarily a 25-75 mix. So I just want to clarify that.
Oak County entered crisis on overdoses. We had 425 deaths last year. That's 100 more than the year before, and I believe the year before was 100 more than the year before. And in reading the report, I, you talk about overdose, you talk about the opiate crisis. But I didn't feel as though I saw real, a real look or breakdown in how to deal with that. I mean, 425 lives in one year, to me, is a big crisis. And, 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 you know, in my opinion, I made it quite clear that I think we've not really done anything to save these lives that is of any consequence. And so I know you're talking about coordinated system care and all care. Flexible beds are very difficult to do because if we made, let's say, for example, our Baker Act facility flexible beds, we can do a marchment there. But because of state law, if a Baker Act comes and they don't have any beds, they have to kick that marchment out. And that is not any kind of coordinated, comprehensive quality of care if, in fact, we have a marchment bed in that Baker Act facility and a Baker Act comes in and we have to kick them out. So, so clearly, we'd have to change some state laws to do that kind of federal, that flexible bed you're talking about. But I've got real concerns that the overdose crisis is not clearly addressed, unless you think I'm misreading it, and if you could clarify, I'd help. Appreciate that.
You know, Commissioner, we, we appreciate that. We know that it is a tragic and challenging issue for the community. And those numbers are, are not acceptable, I think, by anybody's measure. If I could maybe ask Vivian from our team to chime in on that. You know, it wasn't a, it was one of the guiding questions at the beginning, but our scope of work was really to look at the entire system of care in aggregate. And a lot of times, you're right, we're trying to establish the right infrastructure so that no matter what the type of drug dependency issue or mental health issue is, that the system has the right infrastructure to match that at the right time, place, and type of care setting. But clearly, this, 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 this is a, a crisis for many communities. And Vivian, would you like to share our perspective on that?
Sure. Thank you. So Commissioner Peters, there's two things I, I want to highlight. One, the importance of understanding not just the overdoses, but actually the system that's currently servicing this population. And unfortunately, what you're about to see, because we're currently seeing this right now, since COVID-19 has hit, we have seen more overdoses, which is very unfortunate, but it's projected to continue. When we looked at the data and we looked at, and we actually met with the stakeholders, and you guys do have a really well-established opiate task force. What they had felt was that if without that task force, there would actually be more overdoses. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Actually, be more overdoses of, of the task force was not established. And so that was a positive thing. Unfortunately, because the task force does not have clear outcomes in terms of what they have implemented, one of the examples that we've given, actually, we gave a couple of examples in the report, where task force, task force have actually evaluated the programs or the services that they have implemented and showed good in opiate overdoses. The other aspect that I think is really crucial, and goes back into the prevention, early intervention piece, is that really well-established integrated models of care would support the, the individuals that are either utilizing opiates or, or family members that are seeking care. When we did a bit of a deeper dive in terms of the research of the effectiveness of marchment beds, the outcomes are actually shown as 50-50. And so when we see research that shows a 50-50% split, I then looked a little bit further to say, okay, for the 50% that were successful through the Marchment Act or the Marchment beds, what was along the two little outcomes? And unfortunately, we couldn't find anything in terms of long-term outcomes. I think I go back to the point of your prevention, early intervention, and looking at the other two models that we've stipulated in the report of how those opiate task forces have actually worked and integrated their systems and shown outcomes is more, is a more effective model. Now, after you do that, if it still shows that there might be a need for a marchman facility, then we're, we're saying that they move forward. But it's just the data that we're currently missing, and it's the integration of services that have already come back to us saying it's not well-integrated. Individuals are currently working in silos, and we don't have real clear outcomes that demonstrate that the models that are currently in place are actually working.
Okay, thank you, and that's very helpful. So I, I do have a question. I wanted to do a one-on-one with you, so I wouldn't have had so many questions during this meeting. And we weren't able to facilitate that. Will you still be available for us to do that?
I am going nowhere.
Okay, that's great. And the other thing I have to put out there, and I'm, I'm just going to put it out there, and I sure, and some folks might not appreciate me saying this, but this system and this infrastructure that you're talking about, and I know we only had you look at adult data, but during this crisis, I've had constituents come to me where children have had real crises. And, and it's been very difficult to get them the services that they needed. So if we look at this 800 number, it was easy to do this infrastructure to include children, correct? Because my frustration is, I've been told numerous times that the county doesn't do children because we have JWB. And JWB is really, their role is in total healthcare for children and total, total care for children. And I have concern that, that the opinion of the county is that we don't do children. And if we create some kind of infrastructure for care, it should be for the entire family, no matter what age. And so I, I'm assuming that whatever infrastructure we're looking at, you would also incorporate children and not just adults only.
Yeah, so the 1-800 model is often seen throughout the entire county. So it's, it's children, adolescents, transitional age, adults, and seniors. But again, it, it all depends on how the county wishes to set it up. It is at times difficult to split the transitional age youth from adults because they're, and I put this in the report, that their treatment models are actually quite unique for that population. Access to care is access to care, and servicing your citizens is the most important thing. And if you already established the 1-800 number, again, if your partners are willing to engage, and I hope the partners are willing to engage, that is the best model you could provide for your citizens.
I, you know, I really want to thank you for all your, all your hard work. I really appreciate the work that you've put in, and I know you did it in such a short timeline. And, and I really think you did some good work, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the compliment.
Thank you. And Commissioner Peters, if I could just, one other thing I, I would add is that we, we've worked with some counties, not in Florida, but some counties to not only set up coordinated access across the, the cohorts, the age group cohorts for behavioral health, but they're also looking at integrating the community health clinic population into those same coordinated access lines, helping again to de-stigmatize, improve access. Now, of course, that comes with additional time and complexity and, and setting that up and having the right clinical professionals behind the screen or over the phone, as it were, handle all these various needs. But, you know, further integration on that front as well is, is possible in terms of where the county may go in the future.
Well, that sounds very exciting, and I certainly hope we'll consider it, and I appreciate those comments. Thank you very much. And when I follow up, I want to hear more about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Seal, I think I skipped over you before.
I'm very patient. I don't mind wait my, wait for my turn. Well, I have to say that this report only confirms what we've probably known for the last 15 years. And to have a respected consultant come back and affirm and confirm what's been going on in our county is probably of great value because it's not the internal not-for-profits looking at each other and trying to work in a work group. If you recall, we had the Health and Behavioral Health Network through the Health and Human Services Coordinating Council. We had a lot of those recommendations studied there. We had the mental health group, working groups, various times over the years. But again, having somebody from the outside looking in does give us valuable data. So moving forward with the minimum data set and the coordinated access model, and that I heard that KPMG can help us for two more months, can you help us in those two areas?
Yes, that, that, that was, that was our goal, that we would focus the help on. Obviously, it's, it's, you know, to your board's discretion as to what the priorities are. And however we use that time, it'll be on your priorities, but that would be our recommendation. Fleshing those out relative to some of the constraints that Commissioner Gerard mentioned, and, you know, relative to funding and relative to integration that Commissioner Peters mentioned, that we think those are the, the most worthy uses of your focus and, and our time, if, if we can make that recommendation.
Okay. And I do concur with Commissioner Peters that we need to, the 1-800 line needs to address everyone because we'll get the JWB. I serve on the Juvenile Welfare Board, and we'll get the resources that they're doing in the mental health arena all integrated with everything else. So the, you know, having one place to go to is going to be very valuable. Thank you.
Commissioner Will?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief, but I concur with Commissioner Peters and Seal on the having one number for both youth and adults. I think that makes a lot of sense. I thought it was a good report. You kept it just under 100 pages, very detailed. Frankly, we could spend two hours just on the triangle. You're explaining that. So I think there's a lot there, and I look forward to, you know, staff coming back with some recommendations. But on the minimum data set, you know, everything we talk about now, you know, it's got to be data-driven. And even on the issue of Corona, we spent a lot of time talking about data and what it means. So you talked about the data collaborative and then Care Connect. Are we talking about building, is this like BI for, for this issue? Business intelligence, is that what we're trying to build? And are we recreating another data set or building on what we already have?
So Commissioner, I'll, I'll ask Vivian to chime in and, and, and again, Lourdes to speak to any of the historical efforts of those two working groups. But our view is that this is building on what you have. It's taking it to the next level. You know, the data that's coming in right now, again, is slightly different or sometimes drastically different by provider, by program, and by funder. And we want to make that congruent so that the data you're looking at is reliable. It's all in the same structure so that you can roll up and see the top-level measures and roll down, to your point about a business intelligence framework, roll down to the micro level to understand what's making our needle move at the highest level that the board would, would, would be caring out about or executive administrators. We, we do think it's more than just the typical BI exercise. It's not just putting a, a, a better-looking dashboard or, or charts on the front end of it. That's the easiest part, quite frankly. The hardest part is, number one, getting stakeholders to agree on what goes into that minimum data set, being mindful of privacy concerns and other clinical level issues, but also providing the right aggregate information that providers can benefit from seeing from one another, especially if a consumer goes from different care settings or different providers, if they move or they have choice to go to a different provider. So we view this as also benefiting the clinicians, and that's probably, may sound the easiest, but is probably the hardest part of, of this journey. For, for, for our discussions with Central Florida Behavioral Health, we've sensed willingness and openness and past consideration of these concepts. And we hope that through the county's leadership, this will move ahead and go beyond the, where the initiatives before have been able to achieve.
Okay. Can I ask Lourdes a question if she's on?
I'm here.
Lourdes, I know you always give us to a straight, so you know, we've been talking about data for a long time. And I thought what William just described what William just described was what the data collaborative was supposed to be. But is that just foundational? And now this is just the next logical step? Or we not get where we wanted to be with the data collaborative?
Yeah, no. Thank you for that question. And first, let me say, as far as Care Connect, which you also mentioned, Commissioner, that's really a form of referrals and information. So it really isn't this, okay, just for everyone listening. And then as far as the data collaborative, it's more high level data. It's not the it doesn't tell us if a certain provider is doing well, a certain program is doing well. It's really more overall. So that doesn't cut it for what we need either, for what we're talking about right now to get to the next level. It's still good, but it's it's not the level we need that we're looking for.
Okay. And we sense that all the providers are on board with providing this data?
Um, I, you know, I, we we need to work on that. I I think there's some issues there, if I have to be honest about it. I don't know that it's a lack of willingness. I think a lot of it is the data systems, not talking to one another, the systems. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done there because we requested data and did not get the level of data that we would have wanted. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Lourdes.
So I don't know if there are any other comments. But I know this is really, you know, step one of lots of steps to come. And I want to, you know, reassure the staff or the the board, you know, there are a lot of programs that we have that are very successful, as you've heard me present on a number of occasions, as well as Daisy. We can resend all of those out. But yeah, we have, we have work to do. There's no question about that. Again, I'm not surprised about anything in this report. I always tell you, this is a monster of an issue, right? Especially our opioids. So there is definitely more work to do, a lot of great, successful programs that are happening. But we still need more. So we can, you know, resend all of those just to refresh your memories on those. But again, we we need to do more.
But that this is the first step to that. So you've got you've got kind of a pathway. And we'll bring back to you as part of the budget process, kind of those next steps. And and we've got two months left on their contract. We need an extension on that to carry out and help us with certain pieces to that. But it's going to have to be an iterative process. We have to have everybody at the table. We need to be able to collect the data. And people need to need to have the capability of providing the data, and we need to get clear in terms of the expected outcomes as a result. So I think they can help us with this. This is this is the beginning of a report. They've they've interacted and kind of analyzed that, and we'll we'll bring back specific strategies.
And Barry, if I can just add one more point, I know we have Linda McKinnon on the phone from Central Florida Behavioral Health Network. And I want to make sure and give her an opportunity that she can send it in later. I know we're kind of tight for time. But as far as the managing entity in Broward and how that works and what DCF funds, what it doesn't, and how that collaborative works. You know, I'll have Linda send that out so everyone has that information and that it's accurate. I think that's important.
I think that would be really important. I'd like to see that. I didn't realize that was a possibility. But that's what I'd also like to see going forward, some very specific sort of possible paths. You know, no, given the atmosphere that we have and the players that we have, you know, what are our tasks? Not just what new services do we want to create, but what are our barriers and what are the things that we need to get through?
And I think that was the key thing. The question was, is are we going to go build something? Are we going to have better data to utilize our resources and coordinate care and provide, you know, case management right up front, regardless of where you enter the system, where our services are targeted? That. And I think that the report says is we need some more information to be able to get to that next level.
Right. Great. Okay. Commissioner Peters?
So this question's for Barry. So we waited a year to do the study so that we would be prepared next budget cycle to put something in place. Now, I know there's two recommendations that are the top first steps, which I happen to agree with. The 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 data, the management of the data and the access to care. So my question to you is, how prepared are we to put something in the budget and at what level? And is it going to be this budget cycle? Are we going to wait a whole nother year?
No, this budget cycle. That's the reason we wanted to get that to you today, ahead of the budget, you know, cycle. Now, we're going to be talking next month, and this is going to be a challenging year, but this is an important piece. We did set aside money last year for this and and with the expectations that we'd be able to implement these to this.
Okay, well, I'd like to have a little more detail on that kind of sooner than we're just presenting on the budget, if that's okay. Because I do have some concerns about that. And, you know, this is something I'm extremely passionate about and I've worked on for many, many years. I want to make sure that we do something quicker. I'm not okay with another four hundred and twenty five deaths this year in overdose. And I'm not okay with everyone coming into our system through crisis and and not through the community. So you know, I hope we have a good comprehensive plan and we have plenty of time to discuss it.
And I think we do too. I mean, just to comment on that, we do too. And I really hope that our partners through Central Florida Behavioral Health and the partner agencies partner with us and be able to make sure that we have that front door and we have the data necessary to make those decisions.
One more question. I know the sheriff is listening. Is there, you know, not to call him out or anything, but I was just curious if he wanted to expound on any of his thoughts. I know Mr. Dillinger sent me some information, and his concern was connecting people that come out of diversion, and and he feels that the connection's not there. There's a there's a void there. So I know those are some of his thoughts he couldn't attend, but and I have his comments. I'm happy to share with you. But I also am curious about what the sheriff thinks, if he has any comments. I think he's such an important key in this whole program and process on this whole issue. So thanks.
I've been listening. I read the report. I know you're short on time. I've had an opportunity to talk to the administrator about it. I concur with everything that's in the report. I think the system needs a lot of work. I know the system needs a lot of work. And I even hesitate to call it a system. I don't think we have a system. I think we got a whole bunch of silos that sometimes play well in the sandbox and sometimes don't, and unfortunately, more times don't than than they do. And it needs a lot of work. I've said this before, and I've talked to all the providers and all those that are listening. I'm not saying anything here. I haven't said to them in the past. And there's a tremendous amount to be done. And I am very willing to continue to be a part of the discussion, be a part of the solution, hopefully, and work with you all on it. But there is much to be done, especially in the area of case management. I really believe the key to success is case management. If these people could solve their problems on their own, they would. They can't. They need help. And we need more coordinated care. This is not coordinated, and it is not case management where it needs to be. And there's a whole lot of different entities going in different directions, and it has to come together. So but at the right time, I'm happy to have as much further discussion with you about it as you want to have.
Thank you, Sheriff. I think there are surprised to hear you say, promise that we're going to do big things in the next year because I don't think we have any idea what our budget's going to look like. I don't think any of us, Commissioner Peters, is happy with the current situation we have. That's why we're here talking about it. That's why we've been talking about it for years. And I I think we're all committed to doing what we can in the coming year. But I want a bit more specifics. I have my ideas about what's needed. When I worked in this system, we had a pretty robust case management system, and it's disappeared. I don't know why the state would do that. But it's disappeared. So that's certainly one thing that I think we need. But I think everything in terms of concrete solutions is going to come down to what can we afford to do in the next year? Because frankly, I don't, we have a lot of essential services that we need to provide. And I'm hoping that we have the money that we need to do all that. And if we do, great, let's spend some on on improving this mental health system. If not, you're damn sure it's going to go, excuse me, that it's going to go out another year because the sewers need to work and the water needs to run. And you know, this is kind of a this this pandemic has thrown a wrench in everything. But yeah, we, if if there's money to continue to do that, even considering that we put away money this year to do it, I'm sure we can't do all of it, but we'll do what we can do. But yeah, I'm ready to hear specifics. So anybody else for now? I know we're and I never did get a chance to meet with you guys. I would love to at some point. Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah, no, I just, most, most of the questions or comments that I was thinking about, you guys have articulated better than I would have. I just, the thing that struck me, I think, is, I can't remember who was talking about it. But it was talking about that 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 triangle, and I think Commissioner Welch said we could spend hours talking about that triangle. But that ninety six percent of the community can access mental health in the lower cost base of the triangle. And so, you know, again, as we look forward to the coming year and figuring out what we're going to be able to do with limited resources, I'm assuming that that's kind of screening stuff, and it's also kind of case management as opposed to that. We have to deal with the crisis piece too. I'm not ignoring that, but it seems to me that that's the area that we could spend spend more time in it. And certainly, the performance and coordinating care piece of this is where we've got to focus on. But just just a quick comment about that, that that comment about ninety six percent of the community. And is that descriptive of Pinellas County to you?
Oh, I'll answer that. So it's it's ninety six percent, and that's a general term when we look at overall globally with
Right.
Unless you have a high risk population, and I'm sure the sheriff's department or, you know, your your behavioral health providers could tell you, unless you have a high risk population, that ninety six percent is actually able to be serviced in the base of that triangle. Now, Pinellas County, you may have, and I don't know Pinellas County in detail, but you may have a high risk hub. And I know when I asked about it, they had indicated that you don't necessarily have one, but you may have either a community that has all risk factors where we would probably have a higher service rate for that community than we would a general population.
Well, again, as we move forward, getting more familiar with our county as from from a homeless standpoint, opioid crisis and suicide, all three of those things should be well known as to how we are different from other counties. Are we part of that ninety six percent that, or are we different? Are we, do we need more intensive crisis management product than than the norm? So I would hope as we go forward that more of that more knowledge of that as to how it relates to this this triangle and us doing case management and preventative stuff upfront versus the crisis that we have to deal with. But it seems like if we do more of the other, well, less of the, you know, of the crisis management. But thank you for your for your comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you so much for your work on this. We look forward to working with you further.
Thank you.
I have a question for the group. We're at almost one o'clock. I know at least one of us has a three o'clock that they need to get to. And we have agenda briefing. I assume that'll be fairly short, but what of the rest of the topics here do we want to have? I think the reopening discussion's going to be pretty long. Or maybe
I was I was really just going to kind of give you our thoughts and where we're at. I'm going to meet with next week with the appointing authorities. So that is something we could postpone to a later date if you want. Kelly has a quick update regarding beach re-nourishment that she does need to cover with you, but that that should be fairly short.
Okay. What are anybody else's feelings?
I'm okay with continuing, just going on and and covering the whole thing.
Yes, Commissioner Welch.
I would like to talk about reopening.
Okay. I do think we need to take a little break. Twenty minutes? Can we come back at one twenty? No, that's that's half an hour. Okay. One fifteen. How's that? Reset, no, one fifteen.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
On the agenda, item number one is to propose ordinance to amend the county code related to vessel exclusion zones. This is for the Outback Key area.
Any questions? Yes, Commissioner Justice, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I assume we'll have a more in-depth presentation on Tuesday, or?
Right. Yeah, and we'll define it. I'll have Paul Kase, you know, define that, obviously, the issues that they're dealing with. You've received all the emails and he's looking at that as he's to add that the same way he's added other areas.
Okay, very good.
Any other questions? Okay.
Items two through six are reports or filings. Any specific questions? Number seven, same thing, we're receiving file. Item number eight is a word of bid to RJP Enterprises for Roosevelt Stormwater Facility improvements.
Yes. Commissioner Seal.
Yes, on seven, I don't necessarily need an answer today, but on page three, item sixteen, it's a ATMS project that was approved for I-75, I-375 Bay Shore in St. Pete. I haven't, I don't think we've had an update for a while about what's happening in St. Pete with the ATMS and would like to have an update about what this means. Yeah, not today, but maybe I'm.
We'll have that for Tuesday.
Thank you.
Again, item eight, that's a stormwater contract facility improvement, $2.1 million. Also, just to note, 11% of the project awarded to small business enterprise participation. Item number nine is a joint project agreement with the city of Madera Beach for construction for relocation, replacement of county water mains, sewer, gravity mains, force mains, working in conjunction with them. Total estimated cost, $2.4 million as part of them redoing that area.
Mr. Seal.
Okay, I guess I'm just curious, that's a lot of money, and what if, I was trying to see what they're actually doing to the streets there? That would, are they adding sidewalks, or what are they doing that would?
They're completely redoing their streets, so they're taking it down, they're completely rebuilding the streets.
Completely rebuilding the streets.
Correct, and so as part of that, then they're going to add in stormwater, we have to relocate, and as part of them doing that, we have to relocate and update our, our infrastructure.
Okay, thanks.
After item number 10, this is a lawsuit that's been filed relating to a car accident involving a county employee. Under item number 10, this was actually the case related to COVID closure that was the car wash. It's just, it's already been disposed of, it's just simply on your agenda to maintain compliance with our normal procedure.
Okay. All right.
Item 12 will be the local state of emergency for the week after next. Item number 13 is a grant award from the Department of Health and Human Services for one-time funding in the amount of $58,000 related to responding to COVID.
Yes, Commissioner Eggers.
Yeah, I'm sorry, back on number 12, Barry, we didn't talk about it today, I don't think we're going to be talking about it, but could we maybe as part of that presentation, talk about the two CARES programs? And kind of get an update about that?
We can, we'll make sure we provide an update on CARES program for Tuesday. I was going to do that, I'll do that if you want, I'll do that under my county administrator's report, or I can do it as part of this, either one.
As long as we get it covered, I think there's a lot of questions coming in regarding that phase two, or even really about phase one, which has totally been disappointing from the, from a participation standpoint, especially in the 2-1-1 program. So, like to hear more about that, and then what the thoughts, the early thoughts are about phase one and then phase two changes. So, anyway, thank you.
Cover it now or cover it then?
Cover it then.
Okay. All right. Okay, so item 14 is another one-time funding. This is the amount of $626,000 again related to COVID from the US Department of Health and Human Services. And, let's see, which one is this? This is working with the Florida Department of Health. Item 15 is an interlocal agreement, this is a memorandum of understanding with the Sixth Judicial Circuit Court. I guess you passed this back in 2009, this has been extended through this year. This continues programs where we receive the money and then use that to augment court staff for certain programs, but we have to be the recipient, and this would be an extension of that agreement. Item number 16 is a resolution amending the annual action plan. And as you can see within this, there are two areas that, and we will provide more detail, and I think we sent that out to you earlier, but there's two particular programs through the CDBG and the Emergency Solutions Grant totaling, you know, about $2.3 million. But again, we can focus this around specific eligible applicants. This would be nonprofits and others that are providing activities, job training, testing, meals on wheels, and others. We want to amend the action plan, we've already put people on notice that there'd be an application process where people could begin to prepare for that. We make this amendment and then open this up, receive solicitations for proposals, and then make a grant award as a result of that. Again, this is federal money that we'd be passing through to assist people in the community.
So, this is just to incorporate the new money?
This would be to incorporate, amend our plan to allow for this, and then, yeah.
Yes, Commissioner Seal.
I noticed it can be used for delivering meals on wheels, but could it be used for a food pantry in a neighborhood, or that's operated by a nonprofit?
I think, I think all of those are eligible, and, you know, and it isn't a lot amount of money, I mean, 2.3 million dollars sounds like a lot, but there's a lot of places, so I do think that we'll, we'll receive the applications and then bring back a recommendation award, but yeah, it actually addresses some of the areas that we weren't able to address, you know, as part of our funding round.
Okay. Regular CDBG process, could we get a calendar update on that when applications, et cetera, are due for that?
Yeah, well, yeah, we, I think, we'll be happy to send that back, back out, yes, we just, I think we just updated that, but yeah, we'll get you a specific timeline and the application deadlines for that.
For the regular CDBG?
For the regular CDBG, okay, yes, no, I don't have that stage, yeah, we'll get that to you.
Yes, Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, either for now or for Tuesday, Barry, will this be handled like regular CDBG in terms of the entitlement area?
Yes, this is, so this is through our CDBG, there are several entitlement programs within the county, and they would have their own allocation, so it would have to be within the defined areas.
The service delivery within?
The areas that this, this program covers, correct.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay.
Item 17 is a supplemental appropriation for, and this is phase three, advanced traffic management. Previously, you awarded a total program of $4 million for additional ATMS projects, however, there were parts of it that were removed and included in different work, and so this has a revision down $2 million to $806,000 for contract revision, reducing it. Item number 18 is the Second Amendment to the agreement with Covanta Projects for running our waste energy facility. This amendment adds nine new oiler tube projects to this using 11 million of the 12 million remaining unobligated. And I was gonna, and you can read the rest of the bullets, I was gonna have, because this is a large project, I'll have Paul Sacco give you kind of a overview of where we're at with that overall program on Tuesday as part of this agenda item.
Yeah, thanks.
Item 19 is a renewal of certificates of public convenience for a non-medical wheelchair transport and stretcher van provider.
Under item 20, we are seeking authority to file a lawsuit seeking injunctive relief, this is in regard to a code enforcement case. And I currently do not anticipate having any reports.
Ms. Burton?
Okay, that was the agenda brief on county reopening plans.
You don't have anything under your county administrator reports?
Oh, on the, I will on Tuesday, but not for today.
You're, okay. The care thing, yeah.
I do cares.
All right, next issue.
And Brian, if we can get it up on the screen. So I wanted to provide you a brief kind of operational update of what we're working on in terms of county reopening. And this, you know, really has to be a fluid process, as we talked about this morning, depending on where we are at as a county, where, what the governor opens up, where we're at in phasing of reopening. So this is really the beginning of a conversation, not here to make specific recommendations. As you're well aware, the EOC has remained active now for over two months. We are working on a step-down version, but remaining active, so we're not going to be as intensive. A lot of the activities have ramped down, we're still completely operational, especially around our logistics and purchasing and distributing of material to nursing homes, hospitals, and others, and other types of material or needs for logistics. But some, some of the other areas, as that ramps down, we will continue in coordination with the sheriff, the CIC, the information center, but on reduced hours and mainly taking that back to weekday type hours.
Well, and basically, the CIC will be handling those calls that went to the tips line before?
That's correct, people, that was, I mean, it was, it was actually good, especially when we're talking about enforcement issues to have, you know, a police officer on the other end, but the, now the questions are really not about enforcement, they're, they're questions about services and needs, and so those are really best handled by the CIC anyway.
Right.
You know, and we've also, you know, we have a lot of our employees working remotely already. The question for us is, you know, what does that look like going forward? And so we're evaluating that, we currently have 743 employees working remotely for the BCC departments. And those that aren't working remotely, we have them working on staggered shifts. We have implemented vehicle sep, I mean, physical separations between people and going to one person per vehicle and things like that. So we've really tried to follow CDC guidelines as, you know, as much as possible. That's also occurred within our constitutional offices, and they've consolidated down, consolidated down operations, had people working from home, you know, and they're also evaluating, what does phase two look like, what does it look like going forward? We've worked with them, and facilities have supported us and, and putting in stations to say, you know, stop here, put in physical barriers like you see at a Publix between the cashier and that, so we're, especially where we have customer contact, what does that next phase look like, we're evaluating that, and each department's a little bit different. And so, where we can automate, we're going to continue to automate and kind of push that out. There are some that at a certain point, we're going to have to have contact, and, and we're trying to look at the ways in which we minimize the risk to both, you know, the public and to our employees going forward.
Barry, do we have any idea how many, if any, of our employees have tested positive?
Just one confirmed, and we had another that we thought, but we don't have that, I don't, I, I'm not sure that that was ever confirmed. Just off the top of my head.
That's good.
One, one confirmed case. And again, we self-isolated them and worked through that process. We're meeting next Wednesday to a call with our constitutional officers and try to get a complete assessment of what they're looking at, what their needs are, how we can assist them, and, you know, kind of going forward. Next slide. We've also kind of looked and coordinated and shared between our area municipalities what each other's thoughts are. And this is a preliminary, I, you know, I have a much more detailed, you know, report, but they're, they're working through that same thing also. And so we've, we've consolidated it and shared it amongst them so they can see what each other's doing, you know, and it's, we, we like, like anybody else, welcome another idea, and then we incorporate that into our operational plans. So just trying to share information and look at how we go forward. As you can see, most, you know, a lot of them are looking at starting up operations, and again, I have it in summary, but it may be that they're, they're opening that front counter, but they're not opening other pieces of their operation where they normally would. Many are beginning to open up this week or next week, some are waiting until June, others are continuing to evaluate that.
Barry, can I just, can I make a comment?
Yeah.
Yep, I read a news story somewhere this morning, probably not the Times, but that made it sound like we were allowing these cities to reopen when we have no authority to do that. I also wanted to say for y'all, I can't see you if you're raising your hand, so just speak up. Because when we have a presentation going on, I don't think we've had this before, but when we've had a presentation going on, I can only see a few people. So, just, just start talking if you want. Okay, go ahead.
So, again, this was just kind of background information, go to the next slide. So you can see more specifically some of the things that, you know, we've looked at. So, you know, when we began to scale back our operations now, you know, a couple of months ago, we did things like permit drop-off points, remote video inspections, you know, virtual and phone pre-application meetings. This is over in our building review area. And so now we're, and, you know, there's some limitations to that when you're not face-to-face with someone going through their permit, helping them through that process. But, you know, many of those things have worked pretty well, so we're currently evaluating, okay, and we say, we put June 1st on here, but it's really that whenever that next phase is, what does that look like? What things do we, how do we incorporate precautions, but yet allow some of those counterbase activities? I think there's some counterbased activities that we can continue to do over the phone and encourage that, that speeds it up. Talking to, you know, our tax collector, and he was talking about they do, doing monitoring people driving the driving track, you know, doing it that way, well, it actually speeds up the, the number that they can do in a day, so there's actually efficiencies gained, you know, by some of these modified practices. So, we're looking at the same thing, a way so we can incorporate technology, but still allow for folks that need to have counterbase activities be able to do those. And again, we may, you know, ask them questions or do a screening or things like that, just to make sure we're all safe. And encouraging masks and things like that. Over in human services, we cut off, you know, walk-in traffic, we did, you know, staff telecommunit. Now we're looking at scheduling appointments for clients, doing staggered shifts, doing virtual meetings with people to where we can, if we can converse with them virtually versus at a counterbase, again, adding to that. Out in the parks and conservation, we closed our education centers, no new campground reservations, no shelter groups, public playgrounds are closed, so now we're evaluating, okay, when can we reopen our education centers? And what type of precautions would need to be made in order to be able to open them back up? We could implement, you know, we would like to implement their campground reservations, starting next week, begin to allow people to do that. Shelters and playgrounds, and even under a phase two, we would, we would ask that those remain closed until we have a better evaluation of where we're at. So, I've just provided a few examples of kind of what, what we did and what we're looking at, but we, we have those for most departments. And, you know, we'll again, continue to evaluate them. In any of these examples, our facilities, they'll be open by adhering to CDC guidelines. Putting, like, like I said, like they do at Publix, you know, face shields or guards up where we have public counteractions, hand sanitizers throughout the facility, floor decals, signage, sanitation, significantly enhancing our cleaning and sanitizing where we have public access and door handles and all the things. and all the things that are high touch for people. But then also providing PPE, you know, masks and gloves and things like that where needed. So again, just preparing like, like everybody else is on, on how do we sustain this over a long period of time? So not to get into too much detail, but that gives you a little bit of, of touch about what the departments are doing. If we go to the next slide. Again, we're coordinating with our appointing authorities. We're installing that, we're doing our deep cleaning. And through these things, it kind of gets us ready for that next step. And then finally, we wanted just, and what I really wanted to talk about, and we can certainly talk about anything that we presented here today. And, but also to talk to the commission about how do we want to have our meetings going forward? Some of the bigger, bigger concerns that we have is when we have, you know, large meetings. And, and even, even under a phase two where you have groups of 50 or more, will still be prohibitive. And, and frankly, you know, it significantly increases the, the risk. We have some, potentially some big public hearings that, you know, would need to occur that we've kind of held off on during this critical time. But we're trying to look at how we can accommodate things like that at public hearing, you know, in the future. We certainly, right now, the virtual meetings are still allowed to be held. When the governor changes that, you know, if he, if he does change that, then we have to be prepared for what phase two. Some of the things that we've talked about, I just put out for your consideration and discussion, is that we look, you know, at changing from the assembly room. One of our largest public meeting rooms is the Mongolia Room at a cooperative extension. It's a very large room. We could have, we could set up all of our cameras to have, you know, all our meetings out there at, for instance, and we could just leave it there. So we would block it off to other meetings. And that way, because of the, the amount of time to transport and set up a, really a studio for that type of event, you know, is, is, takes a significant amount of resources. So we would set that up and just continue at that location for, into the future when we actually start having meetings. That way, we can allow for separation of commissioners, for staff and the public. And, and it would, we could accommodate a larger public group with CDC guidelines of social distancing out there than we could in the assembly room. So those, we could also thought, we thought that if we do have a big public hearing like that, rather than putting it on an agenda with, you know, five other things that are going to draw the public, we could have it as a single agenda item. And that way, you know, it's only for that topic and we could work with the public and bringing them in and out to where people could maintain their social distance. So those are some of our initial thoughts. Just wanted to get your feedback, guidance, and we can continue to work and refine this as we move forward.
Anybody?
Yes, I don't know if I'm one of the.
Commissioner Welsh, now I see you.
Okay. So thank you, Barry. I think that was good information and you're targeting June 1.
Oh, we put June 1 as, as a target. We can, that's, we threw that out as a date. I think that's something we continue to evaluate and talk about. And, you know, and again, see where we're at as a community and where both you and our constitutional officers, you know, feel comfortable. But we just put that out as a kind of a target date and we can adjust from that.
And I appreciate you laying out what you're trying to do in public facing areas and that. So that's all the county facilities, whether it's the courthouse or CJC.
Yes, and staff is meeting with every constitutional courts and, and all departments to accommodate that, regardless of the, of which building it is.
Tell me if you, and I know you have discussed it, but what's your thought on masks? Both to protect our employees, but also folks that might come into the criminal justice center? Have y'all talked about that?
Well, at the criminal justice center, I think that's going to be driven by the courts, you know, and the, the constitutionals, you know, out there in terms of how they use that. And I, and the only reason I say that is because I know facilities is meeting with them. I just talked to Gay yesterday, and so I know they're meeting to talk through all those types of issues. In terms of in the county building, you know, we really haven't talked about that. We've talked about continuing to encourage that, but that is an area that we haven't had direct conversations about. So interested in your thoughts on that.
Well, I guess my concern is with folks that aren't showing symptoms and they're all coming into these enclosed spaces and we don't have the protocols for testing anywhere. You know, the mask makes sense, just like they would in a grocery store or retail outlet.
And we do have masks for our employees, but we wouldn't have them like for every single person coming into a building, you know, from the public. That would, I mean, we could if we had, if we had the resources to do that.
I'm just thinking out loud, so for our employees, are they the N95 type masks that would actually protect them?
No, we, we would not have that type of, of, we wouldn't be able to source that. Even hospitals haven't been able to have enough N95s except in very high risk areas.
Well, the mask our employees would wear would just protect the public and their fellow employees if they're carrying.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, well, again, this is just my opinion, but as an example, yesterday afternoon, I had a meeting. I agreed to have a meeting down in John's Pass with a group of folks. Two of them were public employees. And it was pretty surprising to me that not one person in the group had on a mask, except for myself. And I think that there's an opportunity here for leadership in terms of walking the talk, you know, so to speak. And that I did go to one facility over this past week, and I was so pleasantly surprised to see that the owner was there. And if someone came in and they did not, and they were not wearing a mask, they were asked to please put their mask on, and if they didn't have one, they couldn't stay. And so I think it might be an opportunity for us to, as a protocol, to establish that if people are going to come to a public meeting, they must wear a mask. I mean, that's all part of what we're trying to establish in our culture right now, is it not?
Nobody has an answer to that.
Well, it's just a question in terms of, don't you think, I mean, there are signs everywhere about the importance of following CDC guidelines that occurs to me. Well, does everybody know what those are and what they entail? Maybe it's an educational opportunity.
Commissioner Welsh.
I just would chime in, I agree with Commissioner Long that even if we're not making a requirement, I think we can send a stronger signal that it is a CDC recommendation. And you see folks out there in the community, a lot of folks are wearing the mask voluntarily. And I think in some cases, they're wearing them where they really don't need to wear them, like out on the trail and there's nobody around you. If you're yards, you really don't need a mask there. But going into Publix, going into Walmart, Home Depot, it's probably safer for everybody if you wear that mask, if, especially if you haven't been tested. So I, I think if we can do more on the messaging side, that would be very helpful.
Anybody else? Yes, Commissioner Peter?
So the CDC guidelines aren't maintaining, mandating masks. They're just recommending, we're recommending. I don't see mandating masks at all. I took my son to a doctor's appointment yesterday and they had one of their therapists faint because they were re-breathing in their carbon dioxide through their mask. So there is research saying that wearing masks is not necessarily as safe as you may think it is. So I, I have concerns about mandating anything regarding that when the CDC guidelines are recommendations. So that's just my thought.
Commissioner Seal?
Yes, well, you know, if you recall, I brought this up well over a week ago, and then Commissioner Welsh brought it up again, but I just think we need to put in a strong recommendation. And as I already said, you know, put this information out there. I, I do know one major, well, Costco is requiring members to wear a mask when they're in there. And I think in a confined space, at least I feel safer wearing something for protection purposes. So I think strong encouragement would be wonderful. Thank you. Oh, also, I didn't know where we were with, I know the unincorporated may not have as many instances, but let's say up in Palm Harbor, are we going to allow restaurants to open up on the streets similar to what different cities are doing in special places?
We would consider something like that. I actually have not received a request that I'm aware of. I would have to check with staff to see if they've had a request and worked with anyone. But it hasn't, that hasn't come to my attention as of yet.
Okay, well, I mean, I certainly think we should be open to it if that, if, if a request comes in. Thank you.
I, I would agree with that.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Eggers?
I would agree with the, we want to put a kind of a sign at each of our entrances of our buildings and suggest that they do wear them, that's fine. I don't want to mandate any of the masks either. And I do think we ought to go ahead and start exploring and getting set up for an off-site commission meeting and probably one that'll be there for a while. Because clearly ours is just, it's just way too small. And whether it's by, you know, by setting an example or simply just being safe. And as Barry said, we have a couple of large meetings coming up that I think that just, that just begs to find a bigger place to accommodate. So I'd, I'd like to see us go ahead and give him the direction today to, to move forward and start setting that up. So I'd love it if it were something right at all, you know, at 19 in Gulf Bay, or excuse me, Olmerton or something. But obviously that's not, you know, something that's right in the center. But that's probably the best we can do as far as having the, the space. So thank you, Barry, for that recommendation. And, and really, that's all I have.
Well, the Cooperative Extension is pretty close to alternate 19 in Olmerton, so just saying. Commissioner Welsh?
Yeah. Yeah, I meant 19. If I said all 19, I meant 19, sorry.
Well, too bad.
That was the perfect world. I didn't say that, we had it.
Commissioner Welsh?
So Barry, epicenter didn't make sense. Is that not, does the epicenter not work as an alternate location, that, that large room where Career Source and others have met?
I mean, and the conference room, well, it's not ours. I mean, we could certainly check, but that, I think our, our room is actually bigger out at Cooperative Extension.
Yeah, I'm just thinking in terms of location.
Yeah, and I would have, I mean, we're going to have to leave our equipment on site. So we're going to have to take over that room for months. That might be difficult to do at Epicenter.
Well, we were a founding partner for the Epicenter and.
I know we have influence.
I'm not sure if SPC is going to actually be having live classes, so I'll just throw that out.
I think they do use that room, I think, a lot more than the one at the Cooperative Extension now. Just saying. Yeah, I'd like to see us go forward too. Does that mean we have to wear a mask to our meetings offsite? Anyway, okay. Yes, Commissioner Seal?
And nobody addressed this, but the idea of having maybe a one topic meeting, I think would be wise if we're, say, meeting on the tides and we know we're going to have a lot of people. I think that would be efficient for everybody concerned.
And, you know, we, we also kind of talked through that, you know, we'll, we'll just take the tides. You know, we're working through that. But this is one where we're really going to try to work with the community to say, you know, you can sign a petition. They, they know your feelings, but let's not have 300 people, you know, in a room. If they want to come, then we'll have to accommodate them to rotate people in and out or something like that. But we'll just try to work with the community the best we can to where we can try to allow the public voice, but also try to adhere to the guidelines of, of the, you know, large crowds.
Okay.
One more question.
Yes.
Yeah, Barry, you were talking about, obviously, we're not going to open up the playgrounds and all of our buildings. We're going to, we're trying to figure out how to make them safer. Are we, what are we going to do with the, the restrooms and the shelters and out of our parks?
Well, they've never closed. And we have enhanced cleaning procedures where they're cleaning them hourly. So there's a significant enhanced cost, but, you know, necessary, you know, cost. So we've, we've, we've continued that practice throughout this time period.
I thought the picnic shelters were closed well, as well, because of.
Well, the picnic shelters were for large groups, but not, but not the restrooms.
Oh, okay, okay, thanks.
This may be a silly question, but do we have any idea what the, what the governor's next step will be?
Well, Commissioner Justice was, I, I think, watching his tweets, but no, I don't. And, and I think there was some tweeting going on. I'm just being kind of monitoring and they're talking about potentially a phase two, but they don't have a date on it. So we're going to, we're going to continue to monitor that. But that's, that's some of the question. That's the reason we picked an arbitrary date of June 1st, only because I didn't kind of know where phase two is, was going to, when it was going to occur.
Yes, Commissioner Justice, did you have something?
Just to echo, and I was, during our break, Marion Claus was tweeting about his press conference today. And it wasn't a specific date, but it was talking about what phase two would look like. And that included 75% for restaurants, limited for theaters, gyms, all those kind of things. So, and he would announce more on Friday. So if you've followed his pattern over the last several weeks, he'll announce something tomorrow and you'll see the details Sunday night or Monday morning.
Or not at all. Anyway, all right. All right, next issue. Re-nourishment.
We have Kelly on the line. So I'll turn this item over to Kelly.
I'm going to, Kelly, you there?
Yep.
There she is. Hey, good morning. Afternoon.
Good afternoon, good afternoon. Okay, just a very brief update here. Many, actually several years ago now, former Commissioner Maroney worked very hard with our legislative delegation to secure appropriations for the reauthorization of Treasure Island and Long Key. Specifically Treasure Island, our federal reauthorization has already been extended twice and will currently expire in 2025. And then Long Key is right behind it in 2030. And so we have been working with the Army Corps of Engineers. They have been completing a, what's called a coastal storm management study. And that looks at storm damage reduction projects that minimize overall, overall costs of the, of the 50-year authorization. They presented a series of alternatives, you know, to maximize that protection, looking at a benefit to cost ratio. And what they're looking for is a BCR that's greater than one, which would, where they would be supportive of a federal interest in the project. Less than one, there would be a lack of a federal interest. They presented those alternatives a little over a week ago. And it gave county staff and the, and the cities some great pause because the projects were characterized by very high and wide dune systems with very little beach berm. And so the beach berm is actually the area where the recreational activities occur. We, we've voiced our concerns with the Army Corps. But we were, we were coming to a a moment where we needed to make, they needed to make a decision to move forward or not. They requested our support that they continue moving forward in the process by last Friday, May 8th, just by email, which we did send. And the general language of that email was in the, in the attached item. Sorry. The, the model did not take into account impacts to the economics, did not look at recreational loose. did not look at recreational loose uses that would be lost, did not take into account the environmental impacts of such a project. And we anticipated a very um strong public uh concern brought up with this um with this approach to the Army Corps, but nevertheless, um, they needed our our response in order to move forward with the next step, which is the public comment period. Uh, that public comment period will go forward in August. Uh, the cities of Treasure Island and St. Pete Beach um have also uh are also in support uh of moving forward with the conditions that we presented to the Army Corps. The Army Corps did come back and uh respond yesterday that they're hearing us loud and clear and uh they will be looking at other alternatives, but we felt like that it was very important to bring this issue to your attention. Um, the elected officials in in the cities are are very concerned. Um, and I'm sure the public, uh, the businesses, the the adjacent property owners are gonna have great concern over some of the alternatives that are being uh proposed. So um, Brian, if you could go to the next, next one and just uh just to be um clear with this particular federal reauthorization, those are the stretches that we are looking at. So it's um Sunshine and Sunset Beach and then um Uppam and Passag Grill. So that is the, that is the the general update I have. It's just to, again, just a a brief update so that you know that this public comment period is coming up and that you may be receiving feedback from the community.
Yes, Commissioner Long.
Yes, um, Kelly, thank you for that update. And may I ask if you would be in a position to bring Congressman Crist up to date on all of what you just said? Because as you may remember, he was incredibly instrumental in ensuring that the Army Corps got down here to finish projects that we started, especially in especially in the Indian Shores, Indian Beach area. And I know, um, especially after my visit down to John's Pass yesterday, there's a lot of concern about some beach re-nourishment effects that are impacting um up that particular area down there. Um, I think Doyle has filled you in with the issues. And so I would like to make sure that he is up to speed with all those issues that are gonna be coming at us. Thank you.
Yes, I I'll work with Brian Lowak um to ensure that our our legislative delegation is is up to speed on on where we are with the reauthorization process.
Commissioner Eggers.
Uh, thank you for that last statement. I was just gonna make sure that you included Congressman Villaracas in that as well. I know it's not his area, but Pinellas County is clearly a part of what he does, so I would absolutely include all of our delegation. So thank you for that last sentence. That's all I was gonna say.
All right. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Commissioners, that's all I have for today.
Okay. Does anybody on the commission have anything?
That's all Barry has.
I spent another two hours on on mental health report.
Thank you, sir. Great job.
Anything new from the commission? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to make sure that the commission uh was aware that there have been some spirited discussions with the Finance Committee at T-Barter with regard to the recommendations for next year's budget. And I'm very proud to say that they have agreed that they will not come forward with anything more than what they received last year. And so to that end, the Finance, the Policy and the Legislative Committees will be meeting tomorrow morning prior to our board meeting at ten o'clock. And then secondly, uh, I hope that when we have our meeting on Tuesday, um, Barry, you could ask Paul Cossey to please come forward and let us have a discussion with regard to the mitigation that has been going on in Walsingham Park, Lake Seminole Park and Millennium Park. Because that is really very overkill, in my opinion. I'm I'm not sure if everyone has been getting those emails, but.
Getting them.
Yeah, good. Well, then I I went up there yesterday and I took some pictures and it's just startling to see what they've done up there. So I'd like to have a discussion about that, especially going forward. Um, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, Commissioner Eggers.
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple of quick comments about uh for Pinellas. We did meet yesterday. Uh, we had not met in, it's been two months, so it was good to get back together. Uh, we welcomed Commissioner Donovan from Tarpon Springs. We welcomed Amy Elmore, our new outreach uh program manager, our new communications and outreach program manager, and approved Michael Smith, Commissioner Smith, to be our uh uh local coordinating board um uh chair for the TD. So that was, that was all good stuff. We also created a new residential rural category, which is a half acre, a half, one unit per half acre, excuse me. No, no, the other way around. Half a unit per acre, uh, or a unit for two acres um category yesterday. So that was uh important to be able to do. And so now it's there for us to look at as far as it relates to East Lake area. So uh, that's the first step in the process. And uh, I also wanted to thank our communications team for helping us put that meeting together. That was uh, was well done and it was really kind of seamless. So our staff did a good job and our communication staff did as well. On Tampa Bay Water, just two things real quickly. Swift Mud declared a phase one, a water shortage order, which just basically says, trying to make everybody aware that watch your excessive water usage. Um, all of the systems that we have are working full out. Uh, we have a two-thirds of our reservoirs full, so there's plenty of supply out there, plenty of products, just asking everybody to be careful with their consumption during this dry period. Um, to that end, um, we created a um long-range water savings and demand management program. Um, Tampa Bay Water Wise is what we called it, launched launched in April so that hopefully over the next ten years, we'll have up to about ten or eleven uh million gallons of water per day savings, which is almost uh an amount equal to another completely uh new water source. So it'd be a lot less expensive than adding another water source. Uh, we're, we're looking at one coming up in the next two, three years. But that, this would alleviate the need for another one after that. So we're kind of looking out in a savings way and also at looking at a new program, a new water supply product in the next two to three years. And that um, it's for commercial property owners, for residents, contractors, builders who purchase and install new water-saving devices after March twentieth or March first of twenty twenty. And the rebates are available for plumbing fixtures, water systems, irrigation system, landscaping, commercial food service equipment, et cetera. So there's a lot of opportunities there uh for some new development uh people, folks to to do some uh water conservation uh methods in their new construction. And uh, and then finally, I would just say, you know, three quick things, uh, and just miscellaneous. I met with the, had a virtual meeting with the Upper Tampa Bay Chamber. Um, just a lot of feedback, a lot of conversation, had a presentation to them, but they were very much interested in the Chamber of Commerce's being included in the uh second round, if you will, of the business side of the of the program that we're talking about, the CARES program. Um, very, very supportive of of also considering under the two-on-one side, augmenting our 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 food shelters, our CARES program. Um, uh, interested in buy local campaigns, um, and very concerned about uh property tax hits and and sales tax hits and how that's gonna affect our budget. So that's kind of from Upper Tampa Bay. The Rotary uh met with them. They had a, we had a another meeting with them and got a lot of good feedback back and forth, but they were interested more about tracing, more about the statistics and the and uh um, and and the presentation of our our statistics and our dashboard. Um, they were absolutely, say, where's all the testing? Um, and we tried to talk a little bit about that. Um, and then, of course, I'd mentioned earlier, Pete Crowder was very complimentary to the sheriff and they too were interested or concerned about the budget hit of all of this and what that, what that's gonna lead to. And um, finally, I just leave it with, uh, today is a piece Officers Memorial Day. It's Police Week. So so for those who've died disabled in the line of duty, um, for them and our first responders, I know we uh we we think about their families that are left behind. So thank you. With that, I'm finished, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, I just want to say we had a nominating committee meeting yesterday for Career Source and we're looking for new business members. We had a few people drop off for next year. So if you know anybody, please direct them to the application. And Barry, I think you had something else.
Yeah, just provide a a quick update. I figured it was more appropriate here than on Tuesday, but the um kind of an update on the budget. So if you look out, you're only a couple of weeks away when we're gonna have our first meeting regarding the two thousand twenty-one budget. That's the first week in June. Um, I, over the last several weeks, I've met with almost every department um regarding their budget submission, going over their requests. Um, and and our team's been working very hard and look, trying to create budget projections where it's impossible to create a budget projection, you know, in terms of what's gonna occur next year. We're gonna, we're gonna bring to you kind of a modified structure. It's not new to you. You looked at it a couple of years ago when you prepared kind of two budgets um in anticipation of a of this uh success or failure of a of a referendum. Um, but we're also gonna try to push this out a little bit. And so we're gonna talk about structure and then actually make a recommendation regarding um any decision packages or requests from departments more into July as we continue to refine those numbers and some of those projections. And I also need to dig in deep, a little deeper on some. So, you know, we we have had some initial meetings. We haven't had the time to spend, um, as you would, you know, normally have in preparation for the budget. Um, you know, people are, people recognize the time we're in, um, they really do. And I think people have heeded that um and been very conservative and have met with several departments where they come in requesting less. Um, so um, people understand that. I think our employees and everybody understand that. So um, but we do need to refine that in in some of our projections. So a couple of weeks, first week in June, we'll begin to meet on those. Uh, I'll map out kind of where we're at, um, and then um look at making a a decision regarding um final funding recommendations there in July.
Okay. Anything else? I have to say I like the uh variety of backgrounds today. Very nice. We will see you on Tuesday. Meeting adjourned.